Amendment and related zoning for Dominion Energy Dominion Energy Substation in Crystal City. I'm Jim Lantelme, Vice Chair of the Planet Commission. Commission Chair Garen was not able to be here tonight, so I'm substituting for her. Some items that I'm required to share with you now are, for the safety of our staff and residents, we are holding this meeting virtually as we did for our July, September, and October hearings. Welcome to our commissioners, county staff, applicants, and community members who are all joining us remotely. We are legally authorized to hold this virtual meeting based on the governor's executive orders, legislation adopted by the Virginia General Assembly, and the county board's continuity of operations ordinance adopted in March of 2020. Before we begin, I have a few specifics to orient everyone to our virtual environment. Today's meeting is available as a broadcast with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1085, Horizon Files Channels 39 and 40, and the county's website. Audio of today's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity during tonight's meeting, please reconnect to us by phone. I understand there's a number that you can use that's provided in the team's invitation, which we're going to see if we can also put in the chat column. And registered speakers have received Ms. Johnson's telephone number in their speaker registration confirmation. For other presenters and speakers joining us through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other devices muted until you are called upon. Please turn off the sound and to any other devices around you to minimize interference. When you're called upon to speak, you must be the one to unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that's located on your command bar. None of us on this side have the ability to unmute you. If you're dialing in by phone, press star six to unmute. Commissioners, if you wish to be recognized to speak, please use the hand raise function on your toolbar or turn on your video, unmute your microphone to signal your interest, and I'll call upon you in order. For public speakers, you will be called upon by our clerk, Giselle Johnson, at the assigned time. Pre-registration to speak at today's hearing was required. We're not able to accommodate additional speakers. Public comment will take place within the same timeframes as we would provide at an in-person meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to comment as individuals and five minutes to speak if representing an organization. We will have a timer on the screen, so you'll know how much time you've used. If you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide an audible warning with 30 seconds remaining. You will be muted when your time has concluded. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Do not use the meeting chat for discussion, or the comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for more information. All public comment must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Lastly, this is a public forum. Today's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for the first item.
Tonight, we begin the meeting with item number three on Crystal Gateway. Three A is the rezoning, Z dash two six two four dash one nine dash one. Three B is the Crystal City Block Plan, CCBP dash B dash one. Three C, Site Plan Two Two Nine, and Three D, Site Plan Four Five Six. Again, Crystal Gateway Project. We have Courtney Badger, our staffing, uh, planning staff, to present this item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Our first presentation will be from the applicant. Would that be Mr. Whitmore or Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, that's going to be me tonight.
Okay.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk to you about our application for 10112th Street, a nine-story office building located at the northern end of Crystal City. The site area is outlined and highlighted in the box in blue, and this was identified in the Crystal City Sector Plan as a potential development site. The site area here is shown in a site aerial with the general area highlighted in yellow. And here's a photograph of the existing condition of the site, showing that it's currently improved as a passive green space. In terms of the development program, the application seeks to rezone the majority of the site to CO Crystal City. The height is submitted at approximately 110 feet, consistent with sector plan guidance. As I mentioned, this is primarily an office building program with approximately 234,000 square feet of office and two small ground floor retail spaces totaling just over 5,000 square feet. The application provides 241 parking spaces, parking at one space per thousand square feet, and 51 long-term bike parking spaces located within the building. And now Ashton Allen from Studios Architecture is going to speak about the design concept and approach for the application.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, members of the commission and the community. I'm Ashton Allen, Principal at Studios Architecture, and I'm excited to share the architectural design for 10112th Street. Next, please. Our concept is really to embrace Long Bridge Park and the future planning and dedication that'll take place here. Next. As we imagined how we could plan a building on this site, we started with an efficient and flexible layout. Next. Then we pushed in the corners to better preserve our neighbors' views. And next. Finally, we opened up the facade at Long Bridge Park to maximize views from inside the building, off to the monuments, the Potomac, the Capitol, and the wharf. Next, please. Here's a rendering from 10th Street looking east. The majority of the building is a blue facade tower, which sits over a stone base as the site steps down between 10th and, or steps down from 12th Street to 10th Street. You can also see South Ball Street to the right, which connects between 10th and 12th. Next. In this view, we've walked east along a new lush trail that we're planning between the edge of our site and the existing direct pathway next to the Crystal Lofts, all the way to the edge of Long Bridge. As we look back toward the west, we see the architecture stepping down with the site and the fitness center in the lower right corner that connects directly with our future park. Next. In this view, we've moved over to the opposite corner of the building. We're now, we're now at the top of South Ball Street on 12th Street looking east toward Long Bridge Park. You can see how the building bends to allow our neighbors' views, and it provides a more dynamic street frontage along 12th. It also has an expression of a two-story base as this slips past the architecture. Next. Going back to the corner of 12th and Crystal Drive, you can see our architectural feature as a glass, as glass that's fronting that park where it opens up to the, to the park, turning the corner to address Crystal Drive. And the image on the right, you can see how that sense of presence can activate the Crystal Drive frontage, as well as highlight some of the monuments in the background as the building is deferential to the architecture. I also want to take a moment to talk a little bit about, to talk about that more solid punched window wall that's made of that colored stainless steel. It's intended to evoke the history, to evoke the history of the site, which was previously known as Alexander's Island. Alexander's Island, before being transformed into Crystal City in the airport that we see today, continually changed with the tides as river flowed in and out. This history inspired the building's color and material, expressive of water and that daily transformation. Next. I'd like to tell you a little bit more about this colored stainless steel material. That natural coloration not only means that we're avoiding using a lot of chemical paint, but it's also a natural finish that has variation and character. It's 100% recyclable, has low reflection, and will not fade over time. The images on the right side show built examples of that color tone and varying character in different lights. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Alan Beal, to tell you a little bit more about how we're using that material on, on the architecture. Alan?
Hi there. Can folks hear me okay? Can you guys hear me? Okay, great, great. So this slide talks a little bit how the stainless steel shape changes along the building. The windows get, the windows get larger as you go up the building, so the angle of the stainless steel changes and reflects the light differently. So in a way, the building will continually change as you move around it. Next slide. So this explains that concept a little more, showing the windows getting larger and just the angularity of the blue metal. Next slide. This slide explains the materials as the building meets the ground. Upper left-hand corner shows the bluestone material as it engages a park, intended to be a more naturalistic coarse material. The image in the lower left-hand corner shows limestone as it engages the, the, the street frontage, intended to be a smooth, more refined material engaging public space. Next slide. Next slide, please. This is a view looking towards Long Bridge Park north from the retail cafe, showing how the retail cafe and the terrace can potentially engage the future park. Next slide. This is a view as if you're on GW Parkway heading towards the airport. You can sort of sneak a quick peek of the, the project as you're riding along there. And this sort of gives you a sense of how the building fits into the skyline of Crystal City. But most importantly, you know, the materiality of the project, I think, is, is really clear here. It's intended to contrast sort of the existing palette. It's intended to sort of evoke water and reflectivity and also step towards the water and engage the water in the landscape. Next slide. This is a section view of the project, looking east, north, south section, showing how it's a nine-story tower over a one-story basement. On the left-hand side, you can see the fitness center and the office terrace that engages the pedestrian connection in the landscape. And on the right-hand side, you can see the retail space that engages 12th Street. And then on the top of the building is the office amenity space that steps back and engages the landscape and provides views towards Washington DC and the Potomac River. Excellent. This is a typical office floor plate, just showing sort of how the building is designed to be flexible, have a flexible perimeter for, for office build-outs and provide maximum daylight. Next slide. There's a landscape plan showing the new, the existing 12th Street on the bottom, the new South Ball Street on the left, and then the reconfigured 10th Street at the top of the page. Also on the top of the page, on the right-hand side, is the direct connection, the existing direct pathway, as well as the wood boardwalk that connects between 10th Street and the new park, new future park. And then the terrace, you can see of the office building, opens up to that. Next slide. This shows the existing condition, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with. One of the things that's not apparent from the aerial is that there is a 13-foot elevation change between 12th Street and 10th Street. That elevation change is actually very steep. It's not a gradual change. So traversing north-south between 12th and 10th is, is difficult. And it's about a five-minute detour to go from 12th Street to 10th Street to go around on the left. So the new connection will provide a benefit of a more direct connection for bicycles and pedestrians. Next slide. The basement plan shown here is just one level, 68 cars. One thing to point out here is the fitness center and the bike room, both very visible from the pedestrian connection and the street. Next slide. This is the first floor plan, showing 12th Street in the south, Ball Street on the, to the left. The lobby is in the middle, flanked by retail space on each side. Retail there both opens up to the street and to the park on the right. And then the office space to the north has private terrace. And loading dock is in the middle of Ball Street. Next slide. And I'm going to pass it off to my colleague, Robert Vaughn.
Yep. So as Alan mentioned, the approach to parking on this site was to utilize the existing excess parking in the adjacent 20112th Street building, which is a building that JBG Smith also owns. So we are proposing to build one level of below-grade parking to provide 68 spaces. And then the balance of the spaces, 173, would be documented through site plan conditions to satisfy the one space per thousand square feet. An aspect of the project that evolved during the SPRC process was the replacement of the existing cul-de-sac in order to both clean up the traffic circulation, as well as to provide opportunities to decrease impervious paving and increase opportunities for green plantings and also bio-retention. On new South Ball Street, you can see the rendering. This is standing in front of Crystal Lofts, looking back south with the additional green plantings, as well as the new sidewalk. And here's another view, looking at South Ball Street for how the grade comes down and exposes that lower single level. I just wanted to remind everyone that 10112th Street was included as part of the Crystal City Phase Development Site Plan that was approved by the county board this past March, which documented, you know, a community benefits package that comes to open space, transportation, affordable housing, a library facility, and then also a minimum sustainability commitment for each of those projects. That has evolved during the process to where, you know, South Ball Street is still being provided, the open space at 54,000 square feet is going to be dedicated in fee as part of this project, along with dollars to kick off design for that open space. But we have also taken a look at our sustainability commitments. I'm going to revise those to lead gold, a 15% energy reduction over current ashray code, expanded green roof, expanded onsite storm water management, and then also bird-friendly glass. Touching a little bit on open space, Gateway Park, denoted as Park Space Five, is identified in the Crystal City Sector Plan and fits into a larger, more holistic, open space strategy that we have been in conversations with the community about. This was identified in the sector plan as Park Space Two, and the square footage indicated the sector plan will be dedicated in fee to the county along with this project. Open Space One, North Gateway Plaza, has been identified in our submitted block plan to be provided in a future phase of development on this block. However, through conversations with staff, we have identified improvements to the existing green space at the intersection of 10th and Long Bridge to make that park space more functional in the interim. On the north landscape plan, this is another area of the application that evolved during the SPRC process as we worked with the adjacent property owner of Crystal City Lofts to enhance the existing pathway that connects around to Long Bridge Park, providing additional bio-retention, and then also a wood boardwalk to create additional seating areas. And this is showing the evolution of that north landscape strip, the existing condition at the top, the original submitted 4.1 plan in the middle, and then the updated plan at the bottom. Again, additional renderings showing that north landscape strip, identifying the opportunities that we created for additional bio-retention. And then further rendering showing the proposed greening and boardwalk of that space. In terms of streetscape, again, as I mentioned, the existing cul-de-sac was an area that we identified through the process that could be, could potentially reconfigured in order to open up additional green space and bio-retention opportunities. And here you can see a rendering on the right-hand side of the page for how the building will engage the proposed sidewalk and streetscape. On sustainability, the PDSP provided a minimum commitment of lead silver, and through the process, we have increased that commitment to lead gold. And we have also committed to a 15% energy reduction over ashray code, primarily achieved through the installation of a foot of a take array on the roof. And along with that foot of a take array, we have also agreed to expanded green roof in order to help reduce heat, high heat island effect and to enhance the building's ability to handle stormwater. So you can see in the 4.1 application, the image on the left and the current proposal with the expanded green roof and the foot of a take array on the right. Through our holdings in this area, as well as talking to adjacent property owners, there has been an increase in periodic flooding that has occurred. And one of the areas that we wanted to look at was how our application could help reduce that through a aggressive bio-retention, or aggressive stormwater management strategy. And we have identified opportunities for bio-retention around the perimeter of the building that will help to better control stormwater and help to alleviate this periodic flooding. And here is a close-up of the current bio-retention plan that was identified and presented as part of the SPRC process. On sustainability, I mentioned that we had agreed to provide bird-friendly glass along the eastern facade, you know, being respectful of the existing bird sanctuary that exists in Roaches Run. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Ms. Badger, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Let me get my screen shared up here. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so good evening, Commissioners. I'm Courtney Badger. I'm, I'm going to be presenting on the Crystal Gateway Site Plan Project, also known as 10112th Street. So this request includes four items associated with the development. It includes a rezoning, a Crystal City Block Plan, a site plan amendment to the existing site plan on the block, and then finally, the new site plan. So before diving into each item, I want to orient you to where the site is located and provide a little bit of background for the site. So this is located in the northeast section of Crystal City. It's east of Richmond Highway, where it parallels Long Bridge Drive. It's north of 12th Street South, where it terminates and becomes Crystal Drive. And this, a point of interest, north of the site is Long Bridge Park. And there's a pedestrian esplanade that travels from North Bridge, or from Long Bridge Park, south, east of the site, and then connects to Crystal Drive. You can see the existing site plan area is outlined here in white, and the proposed site plan area in red. Little bit of background about this site. It was approved, the original site plan, number 229, was approved by the county board in 1985 for an eight-story office building with four levels of underground parking, approximately 900 parking spaces. And this is the building that's on the western portion of the block today, the 20112th Street Office Building. When the Crystal City Sector Plan was adopted in 2010, the plan identified several sites across Crystal City as new development sites, or sometimes referred to as found sites. These sites are, uh, subject sites that do not currently have structures or buildings on them. And shown on the image on the right, the eastern portion of the block where the new site plan is proposed is identified as one of those new development or found sites in the sector plan. Then lastly, the project was one of the three site plan projects that was a part of the Crystal City Phase Development Site Plan that was approved by the county board in March earlier this year. The PDSP set the density and the mechanisms to achieve that density for three site plan projects across Crystal City. This is the second of the site plans to come before you. The first one was 1900 Crystal Drive that came before you in March. The site has a general land use plan designation of low office apartment hotel, and it's currently zoned CO 1.5. The applicant is requesting to rezone the site area for the new site plan to CO Crystal City. And this is consistent with the general land use plan and with the Crystal City Sector Plan. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to amend Site Plan 229 to modify the site area to incorporate this kind of triangular portion up in the northeast corner, and then also to remove approximately 46,000 square feet of site area to be used for the new site plan. And with this modification of the site area, this request also is to retain the existing density on the site for the existing office building. And then lastly, this amendment would allow for existing parking spaces within the parking garage at the 201 Office Building to be used to support the new site plan. So finally, the new site plan, Site Plan 456, would allow for the construction of the new nine-story office building with ground floor retail uses, one level of underground parking. And with this site plan, the applicant is requesting some modifications to the zoning ordinance. The first is a modification to the use mix requirement. And staff is supportive of this modification, but I'm going to go into more detail further on in the presentation. The second modification is to allow for off-site parking. This is what I mentioned in the previous slide. Staff is supportive of this proposal because it meets the sector plan goal of reducing excess parking. The third is a modification to increase the ratio of compact parking spaces. And then the fourth, to allow for density exclusions of typical utility mechanical air shaft uses. This is consistent with other site plan requests that we receive. Since the subject site is located within the Crystal City Coordinated Redevelopment District, it's subject to the recommendations of the Crystal City Sector Plan. And one of the requirements of the sector plan is to require the submittal and the review of a block plan for sites east of Richmond Highway that are seeking a rezoning to CO Crystal City. And the intent behind these block plans is to ensure that Crystal City is developing consistent with the sector plan. No planned future improvements are being precluded, and that community improvements can still be achieved. So I'm going to dive into the block plan analysis for this block, which is Block B. It's located in the northeast gateway section as defined by the sector plan. And there are two main goals for this block that the sector plan identifies. The first is open space, and the second one is infrastructure, more specifically, transportation network improvements. So I'm going to talk about the open space goals for this block first. Sector plan calls for two open spaces on Block B, indicated in the image on the left-hand side. Open space number one is North Gateway Plaza. And the sector plan envisions that this space would be a 14,000-square-foot area that would include a path, benches, and other park features. Open space number two is Gateway Park, which is called to be approximately 54,500-square-foot area that would integrate into the Long Bridge Park esplanade. And the sector plan envisions that it might include facilities such as playgrounds or picnic tables. However, these features would be decided through a post-approval planning process. And the area for Gateway Park, that 54,500-square-foot of land is being conveyed to the county with approval of this site plan from JBG. The open space number one in the southwest portion of the block is being provided with the future redevelopment of the western parcel. It's being shown on the block plan. In the interim, the applicant has agreed to make improvements to the northwest corner of the block, which is shown in the right image, to make this space to be usable as a passive recreation area. This aims at fulfilling the intent of the sector plan in the interim until that open space number one is fully realized, as called for in the sector plan. So the second goal that I'm going to touch on, that the sector plan identifies for this block, is for the street network. The sector plan calls for the 10th Street connection to dissect the site. And just a little side note, the sector plan calls it the 10th Street Connection. And in staff's review, we determined that the, the road name would be South Ball Street. So in the presentation and staff report, we call it South Ball Street, but it's the, the same thing. So on the left image, you can see the street network as shown in the sector plan, where the, uh, this dotted yellow line is calling for an urban center local street to be added. And you can see that overlaid on the applicant's plan view and block plan on the right image. The street that the applicant is proposing is in the same location and generally to form what is called for in the sector plan. So there are two deviations in this block plan that was submitted by JBG. The first is a deviation to the land use mix. The sector plan calls for a 40% residential or hotel on this block. However, with this block plan, the applicant would be providing no residential uses. While this specific block is exceeding the targeted amount of office use- While this specific block is exceeding the targeted amount of office use, the overall goal of the sector plan, which is to create a more even balance between residential and office uses, is being met across Crystal City as a whole. Given the sector plan goals and policies, staff supports the requested modification in this instance because of residential uses that are being provided elsewhere in Crystal City. And additionally, the uses surrounding the site are primarily residential. The development of office does not materially impact the character of the neighborhood based on the use mix given and the proximity to existing residential uses. The second deviation is the to the street section. The sector plan recommends an eighty foot right of way for the new ball street connection. However, the applicant is proposing a narrower street. And all those, the street is narrower, the all the building separation requirements are being met and the staff is supportive of this deviation. In addition to the standard site plan benefits that are listed on the top portion of the screen here, the project is providing kind of three categories of community benefits. And these community benefits are based on the achievement of sector plan goals and benefits established in the Crystal City PDSP. So first, for open space, the applicant will be conveying that fifty four thousand five hundred square feet of land for the use of Gateway Park. They'll also be contributing three hundred thousand dollars for the park planning process. And additionally, they'll be making those interim improvements to that passive open space on the western portion of the block. Second, for infrastructure improvements, the applicant is going to construct and dedicate an easement for that new South Ball Street connection. And then third, for sustainable design, JBG has increased their previous commitment from lead silver to lead gold. They've also agreed to provide onsite solar bird friendly glass on the eastern facade. So I want to talk a little bit about the public process. This project was the first project to go through the new virtual SPRC process. We held two community engagement sessions and one virtual SPRC meeting. And through that process, there was a lot of discussion around the new road connection, the architectural feature, sustainability and open space. And I'm going to talk about some of those big talk, big topics in the next couple of slides. So we heard some concerns surrounding the introduction of the South Ball Street through this block. Staff use this street as a benefit to the street network into this area. The street addition expands the local street network to provide support to vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists. It improves the access and circulation on the block. Additionally, there's a public safety benefit for the introduction of this street in that it provides access to the northern portions of Crystal City and Long Bridge Park. It also allows for the removal of the cul-de-sac on the north of the site. So the images on the screen here show public safety benefit for the introduction of the new street. The left image shows the current route for an emergency response vehicle responding to the call on the north of the site. In the the response route is one mile in that case. The second image shows a emergency response to a call on the north side of the site, but with the intersection at Long Bridge Drive and 12th Street being blocked. And the effect that it has on the response route is doubled. It's two point one miles. With the introduction of the new South Ball Street, there's a secondary route that emergency vehicles can take that that with that blocked intersection, the response would be comparable to if there was no blocked intersection. Additionally, with the introduction of the South Ball Street connection, the cul-de-sac is no longer needed to support fire and emergency vehicles. This allows for the achievement of one of the changes that came about through the process to remove the majority of the impervious surfaces and replace with additional landscape improvements. So another topic of discussion at SPRC was the architectural feature. The sector plan calls for an architectural feature on the eastern facade of the building. There were some SPRC members that felt like this updated architectural feature was improved and sufficient. Some felt like it was still lacking. The sector plan provides two points of guidance to be applied for architectural features at this site. So first, innovative architectural expression should be given wide latitude. And the second is architectural features can range from a special corner treatment to a complete building tower. The sector plan also provides three examples of typical architectural features. So one is a corner feature, the second is a symbolic entrance, and the third is a change in facade treatment. JBG's proposed eastern facade features a glass curtain wall that wraps around the northern and southern building facade corners. You can see here on the left image and on the right image. The wrapping of the glass around the corner serves to distinguish and highlight the facade from the rest of the building. And the juxtaposition between the glass and the blue metalwork provides material changes along both facades. The eastern facade also includes a break in the massing where the middle section steps back and creates two asymmetric angled planes on the facade. And those planes are angled towards the middle and breaks up that that facade massing. It serves to break up the view and the scale. It adds interest to the building. It provides a contrast in form from the adjoining northern and southern facades. The break in the massing also provides two unique views, one that can be seen from Crystal Drive and one that can be seen from the Gateway Park area. So for all the reasons outlined, the corner treatment, the wrapped glass, the change in facade materials, the breaking up of the massing, staff believes that this architectural feature complies with the sector plan guidance. And finally, the SPRC discussed sustainable design of this project. During the public engagement process, the applicant increased their lead commitment from lead silver to lead gold. They committed to providing fifteen percent energy reduction above ashray standards, which is in keeping with recommendations from our green building staff. They also will be providing bird friendly glass on the eastern facade, green roof spaces, and rooftop solar ray. In addition to the SPRC process, the project went to the Parks and Rec Commission and the Transportation Commission last week. They voted to approve the project. The Transportation Commission had a motion, two motions. One, to update the plans to include the Crystal City bicycle network planning effort that's underway. And the second motion to update the design of the new road to include elements that promote the use as a local street, such as including a driveway style apron at the entrance of the road. Finally, after the project is heard by you guys at the planning commission, it'll go to the county board later this month. So in closing, staff recommends approval of the site plan project and all associated items as stated on this slide. And then before I wrap up, I did want to mention that highlighted in your staff report are the conditions that were not yet finalized at the time of the draft. And they are on the screen here for easy reference. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badger. And John, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have two speakers. Anne Marie Spatafor is followed by Carol Fuller.
Okay, Ms. Spatafor, your first three minutes.
Hi, yes, I just want to start off by saying, for those of you that weren't here around the six thirty hour, Mr. David Wood had some interesting comments saying that he was glad that there weren't more speakers on this topic, which I find to be very interesting because I think it really reflects the planning commission's approach to informing the public and involving the public in this process all along. Because basically, you've done nothing to inform the public, the people who will be affected, the people who, like me, who've lived in this neighborhood for ten years, who can tell you that this is a very bad idea, particularly the road? Let me just tell you something right now. If you lived in this community, if you came here and really studied this, you would see the way people speed down Long Bridge Drive at all hours. And they will continue to do that. They will come in our neighborhood. People and pets are going to be killed. And the blood will be on your hands. You will be responsible. I hope that there's down the road, some defense lawyer that comes and the personal injury lawyer comes and listens to this recording and listens to me talk about this as a community member who's lived here for ten years and know that you were warned. You were warned that this was going to happen, that people were going to die, and you did nothing. You will have the blood on your hands. So I really, I I hope that that's noted. Now let's talk about how ridiculous it is to be proposing a new office building in the middle of a pandemic when none of us are working in an office. What you've done is give a blank check to the developers, completely abdicated your responsibility to represent the safety and best interests of this community. It is cowardly that your refusal to raise property taxes means that we in this community have to live in neglected neighborhoods full of empty buildings. Pre pandemic, Arlington County office rate was two times the national average. And I'm so sorry, Mr. David Wood, that me as a member of public has to annoy you with my public comment to remind you that you're not doing your jobs. Now, who in this meeting is working in an office right now? Or will be working in an office at least until later in two thousand and twenty one? Yet you propose a new building, a new street which will gravely endanger the citizens. Why? Why do we need this right now? I wanted this to be on record that this is dangerous, that the planning commission is negligent and should be held responsible for any negative outcomes as a result of you ramming this through, not informing us. You call putting a tiny little sign as information. That's the bare minimum. And you and you use Carol Fuller as your little puppet to inform the apartments, but she has no interest. She has no interest in informing anyone who lives in an apartment and not a condo in this neighborhood. Anyone who doesn't have a financial benefit in developing this neighborhood. You're not interested in what we have to say. You're abdicating your responsibilities and I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Spatafor. Our next speaker is Carol Fuller, Crystal City Civic Association. Ms. Fuller, your five minutes.
Thank you very much. Just as a point of clarification, Ms. Spatafor has chosen never to join the Crystal City Civic Association. I wish to speak tonight on behalf of immediate neighbors who live near the proposed Ball Street extension. We respect the efforts of JBG Smith to respond to community feedback and improve a number of issues in the plan. We respect the efforts of county staff to respond to the many comments provided during the community engagement and SPRC process. In turn, however, we ask county staff and the planning commission to respect the community concerns that have not been addressed on the Ball Street extension from twelfth to tenth streets. First, the community has never wanted this extension as a community benefit. It was put into the Crystal City Sector Plan by county staff on the principle of breaking up superblocks. The community actually has no problem with this superblock. We fought this concept in the PDSP meeting in January, in the community engagement process, and in the SPRC. It is not a community benefit. Second, we continue to believe that commuters will use this extension in the future as a cut through the residential neighborhood to I three ninety five. We do not object to a loading dock for JBG Smith, nor do we object to an emergency access road. But above all, we are concerned about safety. The master transportation plan may not show problems right now, but we have no doubt that traffic and crashes will increase when the new boundary channel and aquatic center construction are completed and the Ball Street extension installed. This proposed road would be built almost directly across from the residential and business garage exits on 12th Street that serve two condominiums, the federal agency and businesses. That exit is the only one available for their buildings. Exiting there during rush hour is already difficult and often dangerous. With increasing frequency, large moving delivery trucks park on both sides of this exit, forcing drivers to practically be in the middle of the road and blind to oncoming traffic from both directions. Limited visibility makes pedestrian traffic hazardous. This proposed extension will make it worse. County staff do not live where we residents do, and they do not see what we see every day. Finally, the staff report does not recommend a shared street or a pedestrian priority street for reasons we do not understand and which do not consider our safety concerns. The staff report admits the street is a candidate to become a shared street or a pedestrian priority street, but cites a principle that adjacent land uses, quote, "don't warrant prohibiting or otherwise restricting vehicle access to emphasize pedestrian or bicycle access or use the right of way as a public space," unquote. Are community concerns for safety not important enough to waive a principle? Second, the staff report says that, quote, "the street is relatively steep and this steepness does not make this segment of street a good candidate for a shared street or pedestrian priority street," unquote. Frankly, that very steepness seems to argue against a full street anyway. This proposed extension road is not a community benefit, but rather a community danger. We ask the planning commission to recommend a shared street or pedestrian priority street with access for emergency vehicles and JBG loading dock vehicles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Do we have any commissions here who would like to speak? Ms. Badgley?
Yeah, I am PC's liaison to PRC. And they've asked me to give their highlights from when they heard this at their October twenty seventh meeting. They've followed the project since the initiation of public engagement. Overall, the PRC members have a general positive impression of the proposed building and commend the applicant's modifications pertaining to the street and pedestrian design of its northwest corner where a variety of transportation access requirements limited or limit design options. The revised proposal also upgraded the lead rating from civil to gold, which will be a benefit to owner tenant and the public and in part by expanding the surface area of the vegetated roof. Considering the location next to a wildlife preserve, PRC noted the commitment to bird friendly glass on the side of the building facing the river, but would prefer additional bird friendly accommodation on at least the south facade. Many participants interpreted the guidance to mean that this building would be a place making feature. While PRC believes the final building design is reasonably attractive, they feel it serves more as a backdrop for a gateway than the actual feature. They feel it creates both an opportunity and an obligation to the community for the small open area between the structure and the public pathway to be designed as a natural gateway, providing the transition and place identity that is important to all. And regarding the small area next to the building, as well as a larger area across the pathway being given to the county for use as public park, PRC looks forward to the prospect of participating in a future engagement process with DPR to create a natural gateway park as a special entry point to Crystal City on this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badgley. I'll give the report for the Transportation Commission. As Ms. Badger mentioned, the Transportation Commission met last week and did consider this project. The discussion mostly involved both shortly, a little bit on parking and then the rest on the configuration of the proposed South Ball Street. The parking was acceptable. It's a good thing to be able to share the overparked building next door with this proposed new building. And the parking ratios are appropriate. As far as the street state goes, there were some concerns raised about the reconfiguring around the circle to make sure that the sidewalks and the handicapped cuts are done properly and sufficiently rather than having a single one at each corner. We had a great deal of discussion about the appropriateness of the South Ball Street and its design in response to community letters and concerns that can be raised at the SPRC. We listened to the presentation of DES as to why a shared street did not, was not appropriate here. But we also are sensitive to the concerns of the neighborhood that this could end up being a cut through street. In light of that, the Transportation Commission did propose and vote on an amendment to the recommendation that further design be done to discourage traffic, discourage this as looking like a through street. One suggested design idea would be having a driveway type apron on 12th Street. In fact, it could be at both ends of the of the street so that it doesn't read as a through street. The other concern we had is, and as Ms. Badger mentioned, was that there's the ongoing bicycle study for Crystal City area, which is not yet complete. Should that bicycle study recommend separate bicycle lanes? We recommend that that be incorporated into the design of, into the site plan for this project. That was voted on, and the vote was nine to one for the adding that the bicycle consideration. It was also nine to one to add the design recommendations to the South Ball Street. It was also nine to one to add the design recommendations to the South Ball Street. Overall, the entire project was voted on and was unanimous to recommend it to us and to the county board. We'll then move on to, I believe we have a report from SPRC Chair Timmy Peterson. But before I turn it over to her, first I want to thank Ms. Peterson and Commissioner Morton, with the assistance of Chair Geren, for this, for putting together our first virtual SPRC. This was a pilot. We wanted to see how this concept would work, having two online engagements and then a virtual meeting. I think we've learned a great deal from it, mostly good, actually. And I think it was a pretty effective process. We were able to get significantly more community participation by having it online, which resulted in good, of course. Anyway, I will turn this over now to Commissioner Peterson. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lantelme. So as my colleague mentioned, I have been doing this project for 101 12th Street South, Crystal Gateway. My co-chair for this project was Elizabeth Geren. Thank you so much, Chair Geren, for your help, if you're watching us virtually tonight. I'd also like to say thank you to Courtney Badger, our staff liaison. She's been very responsive throughout this entire process and was very thorough. And to JBG Smith, our applicant, for engaging with the community and providing a lot of help with their project and sharing what they have while we were doing this completely virtually. So I think everybody was working together and making the best of a difficult situation with the pandemic. Let's see, so we had two comment periods that Commissioner Lantelme mentioned. The first one was at the beginning of July, the second one was at the end of July, and then we had a virtual meeting on September 14th. Neighborhood stakeholders and relevant county commissions were invited to be members of the SPRC. The community was notified about the project and engagement opportunities via county emails, county newsletters, outreach to the neighborhood civic associations and residential buildings, all of the normal ways that you are all familiar with. And the project was also publicized in all now, and some community members even put signs around the site letting their neighbors know about this engagement process. So we ended up getting even more public comments than we might have otherwise. So we were really happy to hear about that. The overall, the process went pretty well. The virtual format did give members of the community more opportunity to review the project. We got more comments than we normally would have. And so we were, we were happy how that went. As Ms. Badger mentioned, this was the second of three projects currently happening in Crystal City. The first one we discussed back in February. And so, and we had a Planning Commission community gathering to discuss, discuss the three projects, projects as a whole in February. This is the development of a privately owned piece of land that has been planned since 2010. The applicant has made this space available as an open space during the time it wasn't otherwise being used. And the building actually isn't going to get built until a leaseholder is found. So that's something to keep in mind. As far as our progress from the beginning of the project until now, we have the Ball Street connection design was changed slightly to remove the rotary or roundabout, as you say, outside of New England. We also saw some progress on the architectural feature. The project went from lead silver to lead gold, which we were very happy about. And you also saw the development of biophilic designs, including more trees, improved landscaping for stormwater mitigation, the green roof, the rooftop solar array, and bird-friendly glass. The, as far as Ms. Badger mentioned, the community feedback, the main issues were the Ball Street connection. There were concerns about pedestrian and cyclist safety. You've heard that as well from Ms. Fuller. A possibility for increased traffic and cut-through traffic, that you guys have heard about that as well. And also space for trees. Staff's position has been that this road is needed to complete the street network, specifically to ensure some buildings in the neighborhood would have multiple access points in case of emergencies. And so SPRC members in the process did acknowledge this point and yet still felt that the street could be designed to deprioritize vehicular traffic. And then also, as you heard, we're questioning whether this should be considered a community benefit. Open spaces was also an area that was talked about. This currently is an open, albeit privately owned space that has been used as a park area for the neighborhood. And so staff has worked with the applicant to ensure the public will have access to the piece of land adjacent that we are going to be getting for a park use, as well as Park Number One, which is a bit part of the bigger plan. And then the interim access to that northwest corner piece of land that can be used for open space while Park One is being realized. The architectural feature was also something that was talked about a lot during the SPRC. There was progress made with the architectural feature during the SPRC process, but some of the members of the SPRC felt that it wasn't enough. They wanted to see something a little bit more outstanding, since it was supposed to be a feature. A larger question was raised about whether the definition of an architectural feature in the sector plan is adequate. The proposal seems to meet the letter of the policy, but maybe not the intent of the policy. But there was consensus that the project is from sustainability. That was another major topic. Everybody on the commission was excited to hear that it was going to be coming in at lead gold. That's fantastic. But then there was also, it was raised that in order for Arlington to meet our ambitious community energy plan goals, we still need to do even more. And so that's something that I will be talking about later when we start introducing motions. Lead gold is fantastic. We are happy to have lead gold. And yet we've got this community energy plan, and we really need to be even more aspirational. SPRC members also called for more biophilic features, for example, bird-friendly glass around the entire building, not just the east side. And so for our discussion today, I've got these kind of four areas that we can talk about. The Ball Street connection, should the design better prioritize pedestrians and cyclists and leave more room for landscaping? Should the road as is be considered a community benefit? A second area would be open spaces. Are there, are the kind of open spaces that are being conveyed or available for neighborhood use adequate for the community, especially in light of the pandemic, which requires physical distancing? Can access to them be sped up? Are we okay with the disposition of the proposed open spaces? Third area, architectural feature, does it adequately serve the needs of the community and the intent of the sector plan? And then fourth, the sustainability is lead gold, which is fantastic, but is it enough? So those were the four areas that I thought we might want to start off with. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Peterson, for a very thorough presentation. This item is now with the commission. Let's start with the outline that Commissioner Peterson has recommended. And our first topic should be the Ball Street connection. Does anyone have any clarifying questions for the applicant or staff? Commissioner Siegel and Commissioner Steinbocker.
Could we see a cross-section of the street? Could perhaps that be put up on screen while we, we talk about it? So we can see the west sidewalks, et cetera, for South Ball Street? I guess that's the.
Commissioner Siegel, I can pull that up. Just give me one minute.
Sure. So just to clarify, we are not talking building face to building face because, oh, we are. It's building face to building face. Can you just go through the, I'm just having a little trouble. It's the, it's traffic north and south, both directions, 23 feet total. Then there's a clear sidewalk of eight feet, a planning strip, and a shy zone. I guess you call that the shy zone. That's on the, I don't know, is that going to be on the west side? Okay, okay. That clarifies for me. I just thought that might be something that we could jointly focus on as we go through the issues. And the other, the other diagram would be of you approaching this street from Crystal Drive going north, so you could sort of, this and that. That's where it would be, be between the two buildings. What would that look like? Is there a representation of that?
Robert, do you have those drawings? Staff doesn't have a view that looks that direction.
We have a view looking east on 12th Street, back towards Crystal Drive, that I can, I can pull up.
I know that Commissioner Lantelme had gotten a motion passed that Transportation Commissioner of an apron. At what part of the street, Commissioner Lantelme, had you thought of that?
That would be at the 12th Street intersection.
It would be 12th Street. So we actually don't have a, is that correct? Am I correct in understanding? We don't have a representation of that.
No, we don't.
No. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that those data were out in front of us as we discuss the, the road. Those were my clarifying questions. Thank you for answering them.
Thank you. Commissioner Steinbocker.
And so if my question's not technically a clarifying question, I can save it. But I, I wanted to get a sense of what the impact, if the new street were to be a pedestrian priority street, what the impact on that would be on emergency management response and the timeframe for that? Is that not appropriate for now? I didn't know if we can discuss it later.
I'm sure we could raise it now.
This is Robert Gibson from DES. So the, there probably would be no time difference in the emergency response if it was changed to pedestrian, to a pedestrian priority. The only, the only possibility would be if it was to have some sort of bollards at the entrance to the street. Those would have to be removed to provide vehicle access. But there may be some design methods that, that didn't require bollards.
Thank you. That addressed my question.
Okay. Do we have any, oh, by the way, after you've spoken, please remember to take your Ray Tan down. Do we have any other clarifying questions? Okay, just open it to discussion. If not, we can move on to open space. Again, any open, any clarifying questions on the open spaces here? We have three open spaces provided through the project. Are they adequate to the community, especially in light of the pandemic, which requires physical distancing? Can their development be sped up? Are we okay with the disposition of proposed open space? Anybody, Commissioner Morton? Please welcome her.
Hi, sorry. My question was actually about the transportation. I just didn't raise it.
Okay, we can go back to that. Okay.
I had a question. During SPRC, there had been an interesting point raised by someone on Transportation Commission about whether staff could consider the street light, I believe, and intersection improvements that would come, you know, in the medium term with the development of Met Park, and whether or not it was feasible to consider delaying the full utilization of the new street until those improvements. And that, I think, was something raised only right on the spot at SPRC, too. And I was wondering whether staff had had, I didn't see it in the staff analysis. So I was wondering whether that had been considered and what the analysis had showed.
So we, the way we considered that, to reframe that question, was, was can the road be, can, can limited access for the road be provided only in an interim period? So effectively putting bollards for bollards or other ways to keep it so that the road is only used for site access and for emergency vehicle access. And as we reviewed that, what we, what we really took into consideration was that we didn't see that there was any direct nexus between the improvements that were proposed with the other projects that would impact this in any way. And we also didn't, we didn't really feel that it actually would deliver the community benefit of a public street there. There are benefits that go beyond, beyond just the site access and some of the things mentioned. An improved transportation network allows the intersection of Long Bridge and 12th to C a marginal reduction in traffic, which is a benefit for a critical intersection to that. And that benefit has both, both transportation benefits and safety benefits. And so those are some of the reasons we didn't advance the discussion that was presented at SPRC, number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Okay, are there any other comments for, are there any other comments for transportation?
Yes. Mr. Gibson, can you just elaborate on the staff reports? A brief comment that the adjacent uses to the street don't don't, don't warrant pedestrian priority or shared street. Could you just elaborate on DES's thinking on that so we can understand it better?
So a good example of a place where we looked at having a shared street or a pedestrian priority street was the 1900 Crystal Drive project that was recently approved. In that case, we had this, we had a new street going through the middle of two buildings which had building entrances and a fair amount of retail in there. So, so the shared street nature created and helped facilitate a place-making element inside of that plaza. And with this project, we have the existing building, 201 Wilson, which doesn't have any uses that would front this new connection. And the only uses that are fronting it with 101 12th Street, sorry, I think I said Wilson before, 101 12th Street is the loading dock. And so we looked at those uses that were going to be right along it and didn't find them, really the typical types of uses that we would want. And like the staff report mentions, the grade of the street also really didn't, it, it just didn't seem like this was the place where we would want to create a pedestrian space, particularly with the network of public spaces that we have around this site, particularly the Esplanade and other places where we're really trying to focus some of that pedestrian activity. And so in this case, we feel that the eight-foot-wide generous sidewalks on either side of the street, along with the street trees that are being proposed, provide very good pedestrian accommodation and amenity while keeping pedestrians separate from vehicular traffic.
Thank you for that. Could I just sort of follow up with, with a sort of a basic summary that, that you, you didn't feel that the surrounding budding uses would provide enough pedestrian, enough people walking around? Is that sort of the basic gist of the idea of no budding uses that justify a shared or pedestrian priority street? that justify a shared or pedestrian priority street?
Yeah, I think that, I think that that's, that's about right.
Okay. All right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I actually have one question, Mr. Gibson. The cross-section that we saw just before had two eight-foot travel lanes and then of course gutters going curb to curb. Is there any provision for a pickup and drop-off lane along the South Ball Street that would otherwise widen it? Or is it two travel lanes from, from 12th Street down to 10th Street?
While I'm, while I'm responding, can, Andrew, can you pull up a, an image of that? The project actually has been amended since it was initially presented. And the cross-section shown with the two travel lanes is the typical cross-section. But at the intersection or just north of the intersection, the planting strip along the building edge has been removed in order to allow for a nearly 40-foot pickup and drop-off and loading space along that first segment of the street. We felt that that was going to be critical because the curb lane along 12th Street east, westbound, is planned to be a transit-only lane with the expansion of the metroway. So we really wanted to find a new location for pickup and drop-off activities that wouldn't be blocking that curb lane. And as a result, the applicant presented the solution you see here.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what this looks like, what would look like. There'd be no surprises. Thank you. And again, any further discussion on transportation? Ms. Segal, you have one more comment?
Yes, one more comment. Sorry with your indulgence. I just wanted to have a little further discussion from DES about the safety concerns raised by the community, the Crystal City Civic Association representative. I guess with the entrances and exits of loading, I, I think that's, that's the concern as I understood it. But could you address how you think about the safety issues with this new connection, street?
So we, we looked at the way this access is directly across from those entrances and exits from the building there. There are actually two curb cuts. One is a secure access point for the federal building. And then the other is the main entry into the garage, entry and exit into the garage. So the new Ball Street is directly across from that access point, which is, is the best possible design solution so that both people on Ball Street and coming in and out of the driveway can directly see each other, just like you would see somebody at a four-way intersection anywhere else in the county. We looked at the design and had our, our engineers look at the design of the street to ensure that there were good sight distances to observe vehicles approaching along 12th Street from the east and the west. And then we also looked to see if there were any existing accident issues which would be, which are presented in the accident history along the street. We looked at five years of accident history along the street. This segment of street was not identified as being a high accident location. There were a few accidents that occurred, crashes that occurred. None of those were more, none of those were severe enough to require someone to be taken to the hospital. And they ranged from sideswipes to ped bike, low-speed crashes. They occurred across the day and night, in the rain and in when it was dry. So there was no real contributing factors that we saw to the roadway design that would suggest a accident, an accident situation that needed to be mitigated or, or further considered in the design.
Thank you. And one more quick follow-up. Did you feel that the narrowing of the street, it, it is, it is on the narrow side. It's adequate. But did you feel the narrowing, I think it was called 60 feet width was called for. Did, did you feel that added to safety, slowing down the traffic, but maybe added to crowding because the street was narrow? What did you, what did you think about that?
So as far as the street width, the, the sector plan actually speaks specifically to this. And it suggests that during the process that we went through, we should look at whether on-street parking would be required. And so if you had on-street parking on either side of the street, that might increase the width of the street by 14 to 16 feet. And so in this case, with the, the grades and the alignment of the loading dock, we felt that it was better to design the road as just two travel lanes with the pickup and drop-off area that we talked about earlier and forego the additional impervious area and, and keep as much of the area in the sidewalk space and the buffers between the buildings.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on transportation? Okay, open space. Any clarifying questions on open space? And if not, any discussion on the open space? Okay, not hearing anybody. We can move on to the architectural features. Does anybody have any clarifying questions on that? Commissioner Morton?
Hi, thank you very much. I did have some clarifying questions that lead to some of the general concerns that I had about the architecture feature. I was one of the people during SPRC that had hoped that maybe a little bit more could be achieved in this respect. So with, with respect to the clarifying questions, first of all, thank you. I heard way more articulation, both from the applicant and staff today, about what they meant and some, some views, I think I hadn't seen before, of the, the eastern facade. So in terms of clarifying, I've got two questions, please. One, i- in the staff report, it was, I'm still a little bit unclear about whether you're considering the feature, the facade on the eastern side or the corner. So that's my first question. Then I have a follow-up. Maybe, Ms. Badger, maybe, could you clarify that, please?
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner Morton. So the sector plan calls for an architectural feature across the eastern facade. And so that's what we're considering, the architectural feature with the addition of those, that corner element where the glass wraps around the corner on the northern side and the southern side. So it's kind of a, a combination of the two. We feel like the, the addition of that corner element is something that's identified in the sector plan as an example of an architectural feature and contributes to that eastern facade.
Okay. Part, part of the reason for my question is sort of who's going to benefit? What's the impact that this architecture feature is supposed to have? Is it toward the park? Is it toward the street? Is it for the driver, et cetera? So another question, and looking at the staff report, and I, I did spend some time looking at the design guidelines today. There was specific discussion in the sector plan about building tops. And on page 115, it talks about a distinctive top being needed, consisting of the upper two to four floors, and articulates a number of changes that are pretty well-defined about what you would expect, rhythm, changes in floor height setbacks, et cetera. And also on page 117, there's discussion about a distinctive profile and some other guidance, except if you've got a dramatically creative architectural treatment that's integral to the overall composition. I did see in your staff report that you thought that this was in compliance with the guidance for tops, but the example that you gave was only on the northern facade. So I'm wondering, in general, can we consider one facade as satisfying the overall guidance for a whole building top? Especially given that the south and east facade seem to be what the sector plan is most concerned with. Thanks.
Yeah, so I can answer from the point of view of the sector plan. And the applicant, if they want to expand on the particulars of their, their architectural feature, I'll let them do that. But from the, the sector plan point of view, I think there's a distinction between, that we're doing, between the architectural feature and the building top. And I, I think the distinctive building top on the northern side does fulfill the sector plan requirement. And the, the architectural feature that's being proposed fulfills the requirement of that architectural feature, separate from the building top aspect. And Robert, I don't know if you want to go into more depth on, on the proposal and that, that, that building top design that you guys have proposed.
No, I think we can answer specific questions, but I don't think we have anything to add broadly on the building top component at this time.
So in general, is it common that a top of a building would be considered just the, what's visible from one facade? Sorry, I'll let Leo or somebody else chime in.
Commissioner Soli?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in here. I think, I, I think we should be a little bit candid perhaps with this. I think, well, first of all, let me introduce myself a little bit. I am currently working with JBG, the applicant, so I will not be voting on this tonight. So I wanted the fellow commissioners to be aware of that. And, but I am going to comment. So I think as far as the sector plan goes, I think we should just call a spade a spade on this one and just talk to the fact that we're not going to do the setback. I think having a setback on one side, it does not follow the letter or the spirit of the, the sector plan. And while I have you, I was going to talk a little bit about the, the feature. And I think that's not a bad thing. I think we just need to be sure that we're making a decision to alter or to adapt the sector plan, you know, and, and state the reasons why we're not doing the setback. But I think to have the setback on the north side, which is sort of functionally the backside of the building, and say that we're following the guidelines, I'm not sort of really sure that that is passing muster. The other question I have is this architectural feature, which is a difficult thing to sort of define. And I think on the, on the, well, there's several things that's happening on the, on the east end where there's supposed to be the feature. And again, personally, I don't know that the design needs improvement or needs to follow the guidelines. But I don't think the sort of inverse of a feature, which is sort of the, you're, you're removing that special blue skin that you called attention to on your presentation. And by removing that, you're, you're sort of de-emphasizing the corner, you know, which might work. And I'm not arguing that. It might work in a sort of like, you know, less is more sort of approach to the corner. But I, I don't think we're addressing the corner the way that the guidelines are meant to address. And again, I think if we're just sort of clear about that and say, the guidelines say this, we are interpreting this way and we think it's good, at least I think then we can sort of have that conversation based on, on, on that premise. Instead of sort of saying that we're following the guidelines, when I don't think we are. And then finally, like, something like the corner, which I just, and this is just a side note, the, on the, on the applicant's presentation, they mentioned that the blue thing is to connect to the water. But then on the side that faces the water, the blue thing is not there, the, the, the blue panel. And, and so again, like, some of these narratives, you know, just need to be clarified so we, we're a little bit more honest with ourselves on how we're, we're approaching this. I think the other question I had was, on the ground floor, there's two lobbies. One is a tenant lobby and one is a regular lobby. And if I understand, this is just an office building. So I wasn't sure why there was two lobbies. And if, you know, one of them, and then it's sort of, and, and the concern here is the, the frontage onto the street have as much commercial, you know, for activation of the street. Because that street could use a little bit of sort of street activation since there's the, there's a lobby across the street, if I recall correctly. But there's quite a bit of garage and, and solid wall. I think it's perhaps a little bit further west. I think that's about all the comments I had. And, and again, I, I, I'm not sure that I'm criticizing the design in of itself. I think it has some parallels to the contacts by this sort of fade-away move with the curves and the, the, the massing sort of fading away with those sort of, you know, the rectilinear version of that. So I, I think there's some successful moves going on here. But I, I, you know, I, I think we just need to be a little bit more candid, and I think we can and, and achieve that. Anyone jump in? Or otherwise, I'll just keep talking. But I just had that one specific question about the lobby.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Soli. Commissioner Scholz?
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. I would like to associate myself with some of the questions that Commissioner Morton raised about the eastern facade. I have concerns about that as well. One of my concerns, and this is probably for Ms. Badger to answer, is given the wide flexibility given in the, in the plan, that really does allow for facade, you know, different facade treatments to be considered, architectural features? Is there kind of any further guidance that staff is looking at as they're evaluating architectural features? I think this is something that the commission more broadly had asked for during SPRC for the other sites that we're considering. So we don't necessarily have to get into this time and again about architectural features as we consider other sites. Ms. Badger, I wonder if you could speak to that issue?
Sure. So the sector plan guidance is what we rely on when we are reviewing architectural features. And as you guys are aware, it is pretty broad. It allows for a lot of flexibility to be allowed to these features. And, and part of that might be by design, to, to give applicants the, the flexibility to have these innovative features and to not be contained into a box. That being said, our, our, we do have a design team that reviews our architectural features for compliance with the sector plan and for architectural review and to make sure that we are achieving what is called for in the sector plan and hitting on those architectural points. But our fallback is the, the guidance of the sector plan as that's what, what has been adopted.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Badger. I mean, I generally think this building is an attractive building. I do question whether what's being proposed as an architectural feature really lives up to the merits of that. Understanding the wide latitude that's given in the, in the sector plan, I think that's unfortunate that that's sort of the wide latitude we were giving ourselves because it, it sort of allows anything to be an architectural feature if you just change the facade materiality. It's almost allows it to be considered. And so I don't necessarily think that's innovative, as was called out, or and certainly, you know, doesn't make a noteworthy expression for the building. So I'll leave it there, and I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholz. Do you have any other comments on architectural features? Commissioner Segal?
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. I really do appreciate this discussion. I, I absolutely find it fascinating. And I'm grateful to Commissioner Morton for raising these issues. I, I also really do appreciate Commissioner Sarly's discussion points concerning sort of being sort of more frank about what the building as presented is, describing it exactly. sort of being a sort of more frank about what the building as presented is, describing it exactly as opposed to thinking about how it it fits or doesn't fit or comports with or doesn't comport with and to what extent it does or does not comport with sector plan language. I just find that that fascinating. I I and I I really thought about this was Commissioner Morton raised it with me earlier in in the day, and I can't get it out of my my mind. But I would just also add I've walked that esplanade a couple of times. I've sat in the park, I've driven by it. And what that corner, it's not a corner, it's a curve, the way 12th Street kind of curves around there. Or is that, is that 12th? That's not 12th. That's Crystal Drive. You are presented with an opportunity, a possibility of going into a park, of of experiencing that that wonderful relaxing transition of embracing the nature of changing your your mindset and the way you feel about things. That's just my experience of that that entrance to the park. And the way this building, as I I would say, is described by Commissioner Sarly, strikes me is that it's appropriate, that it, to me, it's a kind of understatement. I I think others are looking for a more explicit, dramatic statement. I find the understatement pleasing and appropriate. I mean, I'd even thought in in the language, I think that staff or the list that staff had looked at, it had thought maybe a fountain or a water feature of some sort, which I thought that might be appropriate. But but then it just, it feels like you're crowding that space up when I would like to see the spaces welcoming and calming. I think we experience things in different ways, and I just wanted to put that on on the table. And I guess architecture does lead you to to respond that way. I do really do love the blue metal gridwork. And I think Crystal City, JBG Smith is doing that with with other colors. I think in Central Business District, I think there's green coloration that's being used. I like that sort of draws the neighborhood kind of together. Anyway, tho- those are just, those are just my impressions and comments. Thank you.
I thank Commissioner Siegel. Do we have any other comments on architecture? Discussion on architecture. Commissioner Morton, any additional comments?
Hi, yes, thanks. Appreciate the thoughts of my fellow commissioners. It is difficult to make this kind of assessment with language that's not quite as precise. There is some nice, precise language buried in the sector plan, and I I feel like that could be elevated. And if not today, at least at some point, I'd really strongly encourage us or staff to come up with some framework so we don't have this discussion over and over again. I've heard a little bit of concern raised that, well, there are a lot of places called out in the sector plan for features. Maybe they're too many, maybe this isn't the most important one. But I I like some clarification there. We don't have any kind of hierarchy like that right now, right? We don't have necessarily the latitude to say, okay, well, you know, we'll do it here, but not here. So and anyone clarify that for me? Or weigh in on that?
So Commissioner Morton, I can respond from staff's perspective. The sector plan, you're right, it does not call out a hierarchy of the architectural features. There are kind of two types of architectural features that are called out. There are features themselves and then coordinated frontages. And this site is a little bit unique in that it, most architectural features or frontages are are kind of paired together when they're identified in the sector plan. And this one is unique in that it it's a standalone architectural feature. But going back to your question, there there is no hierarchy or ranking list of important architectural features and less important ones.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. I actually do have one comment on this. Be going around the site, one thing that I have noticed is that there actually is an architectural feature or a focal point or whatever you like to call it when you're driving up north on Crystal Drive before you come to the curve. Right on the axis of a part of Crystal Drive is actually the Washington Monument, which is clearly a focal point. So I'm wondering to what extent we really want to have an architectural feature that is almost too dramatic, given that really we already have a pretty significant focal point in the Washington Monument as you're driving north. I just throw that as a comment to consider rather than needing to change anything. Mr. Vaughn, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to respond to a question that that Leahoe had put forth previously regarding the multiple lobbies. And increasingly, we are getting requests from private tenants for dedicated lobbies that originally came out of, you know, a desire to express brand identity and then also to provide additional levels of secured access. However, in discussions with designers across the country and across the world, and then also with, you know, private tenants who might be interested in a post-COVID environment, the ability to have a greater level of control over who is entering the space is something that that might be desired, which is why that is included in the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other further comments or discussion on architecture? Commissioner Steinberger.
Thank you. So this isn't, this really goes into the comment that was just made. I wasn't sure really when to kind of ask this as a question. But I I think the reference to kind of a post-COVID environment leads into my comment slash question. In terms of, because I I am cognizant that the office, what office space and and an office working environment will look like post-COVID is likely very different than what any of us have seen currently. And I, while I am personally of the opinion that people will go back into offices at some point in time and not necessarily sure what the timeline for that will be, will be for that for a lot of folks. But I'm also interested in, you you mentioned the lobbies and sort of having additional control post-COVID. What other kind of decisions or considerations have you taken into account with this building to accommodate what, you know, is is a post-COVID world and and what that is going to kind of look like? Because I I I am a bit surprised that this is moving in a full, in a a strictly office-based direction, given everything else that's kind of going on. I imagine that you've done various, consider, you know, considered why this needs to be office-based, and that's part of your business model. But I I would like to hear a little bit more about that and what that looks like in terms of other maybe design features or how you're approaching this building to address that that post-COVID world. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Um, Mr. Siegel, do you have any further comments or just tapping, taking down your right hand? Okay, I guess we can move on now to sustainability. Do we have any clarifying questions on sustainability?
Commissioner Lantelme, did the applicant want to respond to Sarah's question?
I would like a response.
Oh, certainly. Yes, Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, I mean, I I, we as a company broadly believe that people will go back to the office. You know, I think that the the form and function might change. But in talking to numerous people, getting into to ideas about, you know, equity and providing spaces for people to go that that, you know, not everybody has the same work from home situation. And that there might be opportunities, right, not only for come for people to work more productively, but also to emphasize many of the culture building activities that are very, very difficult to accomplish in a work from home environment. And I think many of the ideas that we were already thinking about and starting to incorporate into our office design, you know, talking about dedicated lobbies, destination dispatch, focus on, you know, non-vehicular transit, you know, with a bike facility that is accessed, you know, above grade. Flexible floor plate design to accommodate, you know, variety of uses, right? This, this isn't a building that solely lines up for traditional window line DC, you know, office, but can also be used for open plan and provides opportunities for those types of inner floor connections. That again, if you have a transition from a heads-down work environment to a more culture-building focused requirement for space, what you're trying to do is anticipate how how would tenants flexibly use the space and how might that use change over time? So, you know, we believe that, you know, office will come back and, you know, these projects take a very, very long time in order to actually be realized. And we want to be in a position to, you know, provide offerings in this area that that may not otherwise be available, either through, you know, existing space, you know, or office space not not located in this area.
Thank you. I I do appreciate that answer. And I, yeah, that that addressed the conversation I wanted to have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Steinberger. Any other comments, discussion on architecture? And then let's move on to sustainability. Does anybody have any clarifying questions on sustainability? Commissioner Schol.
Thank you, Commissioner Lantelme. Question for the applicant regarding the first, the percentage or the number of electric vehicle charging stations, charging equipment will be proposed. I know you're using some existing parking here, but I'd be interested in in your response to that.
Mr. Vaughn?
So we 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 currently have 12 charging stations planned for in the single level of garage that we're providing.
Okay, you have about what, 60 some odd spaces in there? 66, is that right?
68 spaces.
68, okay. And then for the remainder, will that, will there be enough electric, electrical capacity to add charging in the future?
We have looked at the potential ability to expand that. We are limited by transformer size and, you know, total load placed. There is a conversation to be had with the specific tenant around the types of chargers. Right, that as you get into faster charging systems, right, they run higher amperages and therefore even the capacities. So there's a balance to be had. So Ashton or Alan, do you guys remember the exact number of potential chargers that we could that we could accommodate?
Yeah, I mean, I think 12 is, I think, that max for what it's worth. And four, I think, was required by LEED. So I think that we were willing to kind of crank it up as much as possible based on what that that load could could handle.
Is that for level two charging? That's what you're putting in?
I don't know the answer to that, Robert.
So those kind your 240 volts, 220 volt?
I I I believe that that's the case, but I can follow up and get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, in the ability that you, in the event that you can't have maybe some additional chargers at that amperage, it obviously is, and that, and those volts is obviously higher. You might consider whether or not you could have some just 110 outlets in the garage, given the the time that vehicles would likely be parked. That would still give them a charge over the course of an, you know, eight-hour or nine-hour workday. And since they would be parked for an extended period of time, that might still be useful. It might give you a little bit of flexibility there. I do appreciate that you're you're adding the 12 spaces, and and that is above what's called for per LEED. I would just encourage you, as you're thinking about this going forward, that we're going to be nearing electric vehicle cost parity with internal combustion engine vehicles within the next three years. And so as you're looking at this, we're not far off from that being what a lot of folks are going to be buying. And you're going to, there's going to be an increased demand for that. And you're building a building that might be here for 40, 50 years. So just something to consider. I do appreciate your answers and your willingness to to, you know, add more than what was required.
Understood and appreciate the comment.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Schol. And actually, I'd like to build on that comment in that, do you have any EV spaces in the other building, given that this is really the idea of shared parking?
I don't believe that we have existing EV charging stations in the 20123 garage.
Okay, and do you know whether it's possible to put them in there?
I, we have not studied the feasibility of adding EV charging stations to that that building.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Yes, I have two questions. First, Commissioner Peterson, did did E2C2 weigh in on this project in the in the comment period? I I didn't go through all the comments.
Yes, they had a representative at the table. They were one of the SPRC members.
And did they offer any particular advice to the applicant so that the path to carbon neutral could be speeded up or could be enhanced in any way? Were there any comments of that, specific ones?
Yeah, they specifically said they were very happy to see LEED gold, but they pointed out that in order to meet the county's community energy plan, buildings are going to have to start being carbon neutral. They're going to have to be built carbon neutral. And so they were calling for this building to either be carbon neutral or carbon neutral ready.
And then, so my question then would be for the for the applicant. I I I believe that JBG Smith hired a sustainability official recently. I have two questions. Can you can you, well, that's a broad question. Let me save that for later. The solar array, I believe I heard you, you're going to add a solar array to the building. How much power does that, will will that enable you to supply to the building to substitute for natural gas?
So it's a fully electric building, right, and that we're not using natural gases?
Oh, you're not using natural gas.
So that that was a positive comment from E2C2. We have natural gas for the emergency generator and then also for the future tenant space. I'm getting relatively far afield here. The solar array is sized to produce 60 kilowatts, sorry, 60,000 kilowatts. No, 60 kilowatts, 60,000 kilowatts, one of those two. So is a percentage of the anticipated electrical load for the project, I I I don't know.
You don't know. Maybe Commissioner Schol, I believe that's one of his areas of expertise.
If I might, Commissioner Siegel, so a 60 kilowatt array can just kind of, as a frame of reference, would power roughly six homes for a year. So if you take 10 kilowatts as a general ballpark for what an average-sized home needs, that gives you kind of a ballpark there.
Thank you. Thank you. And and finally, again, for the applicant, having gone from LEED silver to LEED gold, we've been, we've been seeing that as the building's specifications are developed and the thinking goes further. the building specifications are developed and the thinking goes further. And you have your discussion with our, our county staff that encourages you to do the 15% below the ASHRAE standard. But I was just curious, can you, and maybe this is not a fair question for you at this time, but maybe JBG Smith could give us a little bit of a presentation as to how it is thinking broadly about embracing and speeding up the progress of the buildings toward carbon neutrality and some, some of the other goals that we have in the community energy plan.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's, that's a relatively broad question.
Right.
So, you know, Kim Paxton, who we, you know, has been brought on to, to lead our sustainability efforts. We have been in discussions with Orange County Green Building Staff kind of about that specific question and about how the future portfolio might align with, you know, not only the community energy plan, but also the, you know, soon to be updated requirements of the, the green building incentive program. So I am not sure exactly, right, when that would be ready. But once we have a chance to put our kind of collective thoughts together and talk to green building staff, we can certainly, you know, talk about finding a time to, to have a discussion with you all about that.
Noticing that, well, thank you very much. And I didn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. But I do notice that Mr. Duffy has joined the meeting and hopefully he's, he's heard the request to maybe eventually have a little presentation in some way, maybe at a planning commission meeting on, on those issues, those broader issues that I just raised. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Do you have any further comments on sustainability? Ms. Steinberger.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to, reader, I know it's, other folks have brought this up as well. It's a little troubling to me that we're not looking to put more of the bird friendly glass kind of on a larger portion of the building. I understand that, you know, a decision was made to put it on the, the one front edge, I believe it was the east that kind of faces the, the bird sanctuary. But I, I do think that it would, I, I'm a little troubled that that decision wasn't made to provide that on a, a larger segment of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments before we turn to Commissioner Peterson for motions? Commissioner Peterson, do you have some motions to offer here?
I do. And let me know procedurally how this is supposed to work. I have a first motion. I should read it. Yes. I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the proposed ordinance to rezone the property known as 10112th Street South RPC number 34-024-008 minus 009-017 from CO 1.5 Mixed Use District to CO Crystal City, Mixed Use Crystal City District.
I'll second.
Give the second.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Siegel. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Okay. I guess no discussion. We can move to a vote on it. Let me go down in order on this. Hold on, let me get my, my paper here. First, Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Sorry, did you say Morton?
Yes.
Okay, aye. I can hear you so well.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Sarly, oh, good, Mr. Sarly is recused. Thank you. Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Vote for you, please. And Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
And I vote aye. That is unanimously. Your further motions, Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, the second one, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the proposed resolution for Crystal City Block Plan, Block B, CC BP dash B dash one dated September 18th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. And you could do any discussion? Go down the list again. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Hughes, Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
And Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Thank you. And Ms. Peterson, do you have any further motions?
Yes. Third motion, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the proposed ordinance to amend site plan 229 to incorporate 1,682 square feet of site area, remove 46,028 square feet of site area from the subject site plan located at 20112th Street South RPC number 34-024-007-008-009-017-023-270, with modifications of zoning ordinance requirements, including permitting the existing density to be retained at 1.5 FAR and allowing shared parking.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner Bagley, first, do we have any discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote now. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
And Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
And I will vote aye to. Commissioner Peterson, do you have any further motions?
Yes. Fourth motion, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the proposed ordinance for site plan number 456 to permit the construction of office building, including approximately 234,427 square feet of office and approximately 5,195 square feet of retail gross floor area with modifications of zoning ordinance requirements, including offsite parking, increased compact parking ratio, use mix modification, density exclusions, and other modifications as necessary to achieve proposed development plan.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Any discussion? I'm not hearing. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. Commissioner Peterson, do you have another motion?
Yes. So this is an additional motion, which I will speak to after I read it. I move that the planning commission endorse the transportation commission's recommendation that the Ball Street Connector be designed using features to minimize cut through traffic and maximize pedestrian and cyclist safety. So as you heard from Commissioner.
Commissioner Peterson, you have to wait for a second. I will second that, Commissioner Peterson. This is Commissioner Schroll.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Okay, can you speak to your motion, Commissioner Peterson?
Okay, thank you very much. Well, this is speaking in response to the community and the neighbors' concerns for safety related to that street, making sure that we are prioritizing pedestrian and cyclist safety. The transportation commission also raised up a similar amendment. And so we're just looking at what kind of design features can be done, such as brickwork or a driveway apron or raising up a slight elevation on the street. So any sort of design features that can be done to make sure we're avoiding cut through traffic and prioritizing safety.
Thank Commissioner Peterson. Do you have any further discussion on this? Yes, Commissioner Steinberger.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on the video. I meant to raise my hand and I clicked the video. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Peterson for on multiple fronts, actually, running a very successful, first pilot of the virtual SPRC process, when a lot of us were still trying to figure out how to make our bedrooms and our offices the same thing. In terms of, I do intend to support this motion, and I think it very handily encapsulates the concerns we've heard from from staff, you know, kind of speaking to that and then kind of our intuition in terms of the, a lot, the additional development is going to be happening at this site over an extended period of time. So I, I am appreciative that the transportation commission for this approach and that Commissioner Peterson is furthering that to our attention. So, thank you.
I thank Commissioner Steinberger. Any other comments? I will also be voting in favor of this motion. I did so with transportation commission, like the race of the transportation commission. I feel that this is inappropriate. I think design can do a lot to slow traffic and discourage cut through if it's done properly. Any further comments? If not, let's go to a vote. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Weir. And I will vote aye as well. Thank you. Again, you have any further motions, Commissioner Peterson?
One final motion. I move that the planning commission recommend that the, recommend that the county board direct staff to continue to work with the applicant to find additional opportunities for electrification and energy efficiency to bring this project further in line with the county's recently adopted community energy plan.
A second.
Second for the. Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion, Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, please. I think that it is fantastic that the applicant has come forward with a lead gold project. And yet, as E2C2 pointed out, and as we discuss with every new project these days, lead gold is great, but we still need to be doing more if we're going to meet our community energy plan. We've set some aspirational goals with the goal of protecting the planet. And I think in order to achieve our goals, we're going to have to keep pushing the, the envelope and working with applicants to do even more. Thank you.
I thank Commissioner Peterson. Commissioner Steinberger.
Was my hand still up? Sorry.
Yeah, your hand was still up. Commissioner Schroll.
Apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would just like to concur with Commissioner Peterson's comments. It is great that the applicant has moved to lead gold. I would commend them for doing that and for finding the ability to do that. It's good that this is an electric building for the most part. The things that are still maybe wanting here are that there's still natural gas for, you know, the cooking, for the other tenant spaces here. In the long run, we really need to find a way to, you know, think through beneficial electrification, moving those, you know, the cooking also to electric. You know, I think that's the next hurdle and we would certainly welcome a conversation, conversation, I think, with our building community about how we get there. I'm thankful for, for the efforts that you've made thus far around electric vehicle charging, the onsite solar array. That's great. And I really hope that our applicant doesn't see this as in any way a slap on the wrist for the, the work that you have done. We're just trying to encourage you all to go the next step. I personally, I think all of our buildings need to come in at, at least at a baseline of lead goals. And then we need to work from there. And I know you've also committed to some of the other county goals, the ASHRAE, you know, goal of 15% energy efficiency. That's great, too. So thank you for that work. And we just need to, as a community, kind of figure out how we go farther than that moving forward. So thanks again, and I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to associate myself with Commissioner Schroll's comments. I too would be voting for this, for this motion. Any further comments? And we will then move on.
This time I, yeah, this time it, this time I raised it for real. I also wanted to associate myself with Commissioner Schroll's comments, in particular that I, I think as a commissioner, we are appreciative that developers are increasingly, you know, coming in, meeting various lead standards and that building fits towards that expectation. You know, I guess as teachers used to say, when you did good work in school, you, you got to do more of it. So by meeting guideposts that developers are meeting, we, you know, will constantly, you know, continue to strive as a county as reaching and aiming for greater sustainability goals as a community, that's going to be reflected in the, what we expect developers to do as well. So this is certainly, as Commissioner Schroll said, in no pay, a slap on the wrist for not doing enough. But this is a, a statement more about where I think the county's values are going now and into the future. And please come with us on that journey. So, thank you.
I think with Commissioner Steinberger, at this point, I think we can move on to the vote. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger.
Aye.
Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
Well, okay. And I too will be voting aye. We have, any further motions, Commissioner Peterson, or is this it?
I do not have any further motions.
Thank you very much. I think this matter is now over. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, for your work on this. Thank you, staff, and thank you for the applicant, and thank you for the community for participating in this and giving us your, your concerns and comments. Madam Clerk, Commissioner Morton, you're, you're on mute.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know if you saw my hand. Is this the right time to offer a additional motion? Thank you.
Oh, sure. One more, yes, please do.
Um, thank you very much again to everyone. I'm not sure that another team could have pulled this off with Commissioner Peterson and Courtney Badger and the applicant. So thank you very much. I do want to offer a motion, not sure I have the votes, but I'm going to offer it anyway, about the architecture feature. And the, I'll read the motion and if necessary, I'll explain my rationale. So I move the planning commission recommend that the county board direct staff to work with the applicant to refine the eastern facade of the building to better achieve the goals of the Crystal City Sector Plan with respect to the recommendation for an architectural feature.
Second.
Second, it's like Commissioner Scholl, would you like to speak to your motion? Yeah, Commissioner Morton?
Sure. So as we know, the sector plan calls this out as a place for special attention. And one thing that troubles me is this feature is replacing this top that's called for in the sector plan, which is a fairly standard way of distinguishing the corner. But that's only achieved on the north side and the architecture feature on the other side is supposed to sort of substitute for that. There is specific language about the top, I think much of which could be applied to further articulate what we'd like for the feature. Second, there Second, there was concern expressed. We didn't have this concern expressed today in public comment and I'll acknowledge that, but there was concern by the neighbors that the architectural feature has been watered down, I think successively in these recent projects that we've seen. I imagine the reason we have this architecture feature language is to make sure that this more intensive new project and projects contribute to neighborhoods. And I feel like if it's in the plan, we should really try to do our best to make sure we're getting a really solid architectural feature. Again, I think there's a sort of general desire, if we're talking about a facade, there could be more variation in window patterns or sculpting. If we're talking about the corner, maybe there's something in terms of form that would distinguish the corner more than just the glass and metal contrast. And finally, this is envisioned, I think, as a civic gateway. A high-quality feature could really support the significant public and private investment that's going into this open space and this exciting contribution to the public realm right there at Gateway, the park. So, that's it.
I thank you, Commissioner Morton. Does anybody else wish to speak to this motion? I will just say that I will probably not be voting for this, not because I disagree with a number of the observations that Commissioner Morton's raised. It's more that I think this is a larger concern. I do agree that we've had this same discussion over a number of projects that have come before us in Crystal City and I'm not sure any of us have ever really felt fully satisfied with the outcomes. I'm, this is, I think, a flaw in the sector plan, that the guidelines just are a little too loose. I'm not sure, and I think we may even have too many places where we need significant features. So I think it's a large risk that rather than being dealt with on this particular project should be dealt with in another manner. But that's simply my opinion. Any further, Commissioner Siegel, do you have a comment?
Yeah, real quick, I guess you could have anticipated from my earlier comment that just my feeling about this particular building in the place that it exists with the subtle, admittedly subtle changes in line with the guidelines such as they are in the sector plan work for me. And I would also just go back to Commissioner Chair Lantelme's point that you do actually see the Washington Monument. And that I think is very, very stirring. I didn't notice it, so perhaps it's not as stirring as it might be, but there's nothing you can do about that. But this is not, the Crystal City Sector Plan was not really, it's not a form-based code. And I think that would require a larger exercise, which I don't, I don't really feel myself as warranted. I struggle with this because I really do respect Commissioner Morton's background and way deeper understanding than mine about architecture. But I just react very strongly to, I have a real sense of that place and I think this this approach of this building works with that sense. So I wouldn't be, I won't be supporting the motion as well.
Any further comments? Commissioner Sarley, I think that actually, I sent you a text. Please read that before you say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
No, Commissioner Sarley, no, seriously, you have to read my text before you comment.
Yeah, but I'm commenting about the guidelines, so I just think.
Commissioner Sarley, no, Commissioner Sarley, you're not allowed to participate in this item.
Okay.
Because JBG, I'm, yeah. Any further comments?
I don't, I don't know that that's actually, with all due respect, Commissioner Scholl, I'm not sure that Commissioner Sarley can't make a generalized comment about how we approach architectural features in the Crystal City Sector Plan.
Commissioner Siegel, I feel more, yeah, Commissioner Siegel, I feel more comfortable if we have Commissioner, we'll have the county attorney address this first.
And there's no disclaimer that he, that he is meant to offer? Is that right?
Yeah, he has, this is something that I'll be talking offline about. So, thank you for your comments. Do we have any further comments on this? Okay, okay, I guess we can move to a vote on this. Commissioner Bagley.
Aye.
Commissioner Morton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel.
No.
Commissioner Steinberger.
I'm actually going to abstain.
Abstain, okay. Commissioner Weir.
Aye.
Aye. I will vote nay. Okay, it passes five to two to one. Any further motions for this item? Okay, thank you. Let's, Madam Clerk, can you call the next item?
Our last item for the evening is item number four, A and B. A is the general language plan for the Crystal City Substation, GP-351-20-1. And four B, the rezoning, Z-2622-20-1. We have planning staff, Matt Lad and Kevin Lamb, to present these items this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We'll start off with the applicant.
Happy to do that.
Hi, everyone. This is, oh, sorry. This is Jennifer Sco. I'm just pulling up my screen now. All right, can everyone see this?
Okay, great. Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Dominion is looking to replace existing equipment that is nearing the end of its useful life at their Crystal City location while also expanding their facility to accommodate growth coming to the area. So we'll be discussing two elements out of several that'll be heard concurrently at the November board meeting. So these include a real estate exchange agreement for a land swap with a county parcel. It includes a use permit and license agreement for construction staging, a vacation of a sewer easement, use permit allowing the project to expand. And the two items on the agenda tonight, a GLUP amendment to the public facilities map and a rezoning request. So we'll first start our presentation with a little history of the project, the land exchange and the project elements and the use permits to just help set context for the GLUP amendment and the rezoning request. We'll share community feedback we've received to date and general staff recommendations for our items before taking any questions. And Dominion has also prepared a presentation that they'll give afterwards as well. So at this time, I'm going to let each of the three leads on the various components present their items, starting first with Mike Holuski from the Real Estate Bureau.
Thank you, Ms. Sco, and good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Holuski. I'm from the Real Estate Bureau and the Department of Environmental Services. And I worked on the exchange agreement and the vacation ordinance, as Ms. Sco mentioned. They're not action items before the Planning Commission, but wanted to give you a little background on those tonight, just as context for the GLUP and rezoning matters. So Dominion contacted county staff last year regarding their need to expand at the existing substation at the corner of South Burn and South Hayes Street. The equipment in the substation is reaching the end of its service life and it needs to be replaced. The new equipment that would replace the existing equipment is physically larger. Dominion also needs additional equipment to provide the additional electrical demand that this growing area, the county, will need in the future and also to provide redundancy of service to reduce power outages. Dominion is on a tight timeframe for the delivery of the increased electrical capacity to our community. And given that timeframe and the amount and nature of the infrastructure that goes into and out of a substation, providing the additional necessary capacity isn't really feasible in a timely manner in alternative locations in the county. So Dominion was examining the areas immediately around this existing substation. Unfortunately, this existing substation site is also pretty constrained. To the north, there's a property owner that Dominion approached, but they were not willing to sell property to Dominion. On the south, they're bounded by the Hayes Street right-of-way. On the Fern Street side, there is a lot of underground utility infrastructure and Dominion, there's also underground substation equipment. So these are things like water lines, sanitary sewer lines, storm sewer lines, high voltage transmission lines, electrical vaults, coolant storage. So the most feasible location for this expansion would be on to the adjacent county property. It's a portion of a county parcel that is just lying to the west of the existing substation site. Next slide, please. The, the subject portion of the county site, as I mentioned, is that triangular portion. It's been used as a passive green space for some time. When we first brought the possible sale, Dominion approached us about selling this area to the county, or from the county. Our Department of Parks and Rec staff pointed out that Dominion owns a parcel at the northeast corner of 18th Street and South Ivy, so you could see it down in the bottom right-hand corner of the picture here. That, that parcel is actually identified in the Public Spaces Master Plan as a parcel for future acquisition. And, you know, this could be a good opportunity instead of just selling a piece of county land to do a land exchange. Dominion will also be dedicating over 19,000 square feet of the existing substation site in Fee Simple to the county, which is the portion of their site that is the South Hayes Street right-of-way. Right now, it's subject to an easement. They're going to dedicate that to the county in Fee. Next slide, please. So, some of the most important terms of the proposed exchange agreement relate to the condition of the parcel that the county would acquire from Dominion, the former substation site. County staff obtained or performed all the necessary due diligence. These include land surveys, title reports, valuation analysis, and environmental reports. We've heard some concerns from the community about the environmental condition of the Dominion Exchange parcel, so I'd like to address that just specifically. We did obtain a Phase One and Phase Two environmental site assessments from our environmental consultant. The Phase Two report consisted of laboratory analysis of soil samples taken from eight different boring sites, the depths down to 20 feet. No hazardous levels of contamination were identified, although there were a few areas that were slightly above the tier-two residential soil screening levels. And so those areas, if they were ever disturbed or excavated, they would have to be disposed of at a regulated landfill. We also submitted both of the reports, the Phase One and Phase Two, to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for their review in the issuance of a bona fide prospective purchaser letter. And VDEQ did not identify any additional remediation measures that might be required beyond what was noted in the reports. Also, the title reports and surveys showed no encroachments or adverse title issues that were affecting that Dominion Exchange property. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Lamb, for his overview of the associated use permits.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Lamb and I'm the planning lead on the rezoning requests being heard tonight, as well as the use permit amendment going to the county board on the 14th. So first, I'll provide an overview of the use permit amendment for the expansion of the existing substation, just for some context for the rezoning request. So, as you can see here, the site is approximately 1.7 acres and comprised of an existing substation known as Crystal Substation that was built in 1970. You also see a small plaza just to the east of the substation along Fern Street, as well as open green space to the west of the substation. This area is currently owned by the county and is part of that land exchange agreement Mike was referring to. So the site is bordered by Regency Care of Arlington Nursing Home to the north, as well as the Carriage House Senior Apartments. To the east is the Crystal Towers Apartments. There are single-family homes to the south and Arlington County Fire Station Five to the west. Next, please. So here is a closer aerial of the existing substation, as well as some site photos taken recently. So in terms of the existing conditions, in 1969, the county board approved the use permit for this substation. And according to the original use permit, Dominion Energy was originally seeking a site for the substation south of 18th Street. However, in response to community concerns for maintaining the single-family character south of 18th, the existing site, which is north of 18th, was proposed and ultimately approved. The landscaping and plaza area were to be provided and maintained by Dominion Energy and public easements along Fern Street and 18th were dedicated as part of the conditions. Next, please. So, just overall, the expansion project consists of a few things listed here. So it will involve the construction of a new substation building, remodeling of the existing substation to take the existing lattice work off, the redevelopment of the existing plaza area into open space, streetscape and sidewalk improvements, as well as areas for public art opportunities. Next, please. As previously mentioned, to ensure Dominion Energy continues to provide adequate and reliable electrical service and meet future demand, the applicant proposes to upgrade aging equipment and install new resiliency infrastructure, which will help prevent disruption of electrical service. So given the existing building's small size, the new switchgear dimensions are larger than the existing equipment and will not fit in the current switchgear location. Therefore, due to the site's physical constraints and the underground infrastructure in and around the substation, especially underneath the existing plaza area, the applicant's site feasibility analysis concluded that the only feasible location is to expand west of the existing substation onto the county-owned property. This was kind of the only feasible way that, that would provide additional electrical capacity without significant disruption to the surrounding community. Next, please. So Dominion Energy determined that expanding the existing substation to where there is currently a small plaza and parking area is not feasible due to the presence of multiple underground utilities, as well as its own below-grade substation features. So on the right here, we just have a closer look at the existing underground utilities. This includes a high voltage. This includes a high voltage line in red, a storm sewer in dark green, sanitary sewer in light green. There's also a waterline, communication conduit, and public easements in this area. Dominion Energy also ruled out increasing the height of the existing facility as this approach would cause significant number of outages in the area during construction, given the amount of electrical work immediately below the foundation of the existing substation. Next, please. So although this area was determined not to be feasible for the expansion due to the presence of underground utilities, public easements, as well as the planned public roadway improvements, the proposed redesign and expansion of the open space offers a much improved use of the space. So on the left, we have kind of the existing conditions with the existing plaza. Below is a current site photo, and what is proposed is a much more open and usable open space. And there's just a rendering underneath the exhibit there. So kind of building off the county's planned roadway improvements, which you can see in purple line work and based off of feedback from both staff and the community, we feel the redesigned open spaces not only more usable, but much larger than what is there today. So this redesigned space includes a grassy lawn, pedestrian pathways, new landscaping, and abutancying options. Next, please. So in addition to the approximately twelve thousand square feet of open space, other site features include the sidewalk surrounding the site will be widened to at least six feet. Currently, it's at four feet on South Hayes. At least thirty new street trees planted around the new substation and along the sidewalks. Four areas are proposed for public art, including the mesh screening panel for the new substation building. You can kind of see an image on the bottom left there. As well as a portion of the existing substation will be dedicated for or dedicated to the county for public street purposes. Next, please. So it looks like with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague, Matt Lad.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. My name is Matt Lad with the County's Comprehensive Planning Section, and I'll be presenting on the proposed amendment to the general land use plan. But first, I want to review the actions that are before the commission tonight and the additional actions that will be the subject of county board public hearings later later this month. The two substation items being heard by the planning commission are an amendment to the general land use plans public facility map and a partial rezoning of these existing substation site. These items will be covered in the remainder of staff's presentation. There are additional applications and items that are being heard by the county board only. You just heard Mr. Haluski and Mr. Lamb's overview of the land exchange agreement and use permit amendment to provide context for the requested GLUPP amendment and rezoning. Next slide, please. Before I talk about the proposed changes to the GLUPP Public Facilities Map, I think it would be helpful to review this section of state code that governs public facilities and the comprehensive plan, also known as twenty-two thirty-two. There's no guidance in state code for how to implement these public facility reviews, so each locality takes its own approach. Part of the planning division's current work plan includes developing consistent administrative procedures for how staff will process these reviews and bring public facilities to the planning commission. Staff plans to present a draft of those procedures to LRPC next year for discussion. So with that said, the bullets on this slide paraphrase the relevant legislation in Section twenty-two thirty-two. Before a public facility can be authorized or constructed, and that includes a utility or public service corporation facility like these substations, the planning commission must review and approve its general location, character, and extent as being substantially in accord with the adopted comprehensive plan. There are some exceptions to the requirement for the planning commission to approve a facility, including instances where the facility is shown on the comprehensive plan. The rationale for this exception is that the planning commission must act on the comp plan and any subsequent amendments. In some localities, this is referred to as a feature show. Next slide, please. All of this is to say that there's not a single path for localities to demonstrate compliance with twenty-two thirty-two requirements. In the recent past, staff has recommended that the planning commission determine that new facilities are in substantial accord with the comp plan. That's what the planning commission did for APS's conversion of the education center from administrative offices to classroom space, the new fire station eight facility, and other county and APS facilities. Often, these facilities were not specifically identified or referenced in any comp plan element, and the commission needed to rely on the land use designation in the GLUPP or other maps or text to make its determination. Another approach to comply with twenty-two thirty-two is to amend the comp plan to specifically show a facility. That's the approach that's being proposed with tonight's GLUPP amendment. You may recall that in February of this year, the county added a public facility map and a companion table in the GLUPP booklet identifying all county and APS facilities to the general land use plan. One of the reasons for creating and adopting this map was to ensure that all county and APS facilities are referenced in the comp plan. This provides a baseline for determining whether new facilities or changes are in conformance with the plan, and it can be amended by the planning commission and the county board to reflect proposed changes. Next slide. Now that I've covered twenty-two thirty-two, let's get back to Dominion Energy's substations and how they fit into all of this. Even though they're not publicly owned or operated uses, Dominion Energy is regulated as a public service corporation, and its electrical substations are subject to twenty-two thirty-two requirements. That means that the proposed expansion and improvements to the Crystal Substation that you just heard about must either be shown on the comp plan or the planning commission must determine that its location, character, and extent are in substantial accord with the plan. Currently, none of the comprehensive plan elements show or describe any electric utility facilities. Staff believes it would be difficult for the planning commission to determine that the proposed expansion is in conformance with the plan other than to say that the use is compatible with the GLUPP's land use designation. Therefore, staff is proposing to amend the GLUPP's public facility map and table to include the Crystal Substation and also ten other Dominion Energy substations existing throughout Arlington as features show. Next slide, please. This is the public facility map, and the substations that are proposed to be added are circled in red. You can see they're located throughout the county. The Crystal Substation is the one in the Crystal City Pentagon City area. We also propose to add the substations to the legend that lists all the facilities on the map under the category of public service corporation. Next slide, please. The public facility table that I mentioned in the GLUPP booklet provides general information for each facility on the map. It has its name, address, use category, and approximate acreage. All eleven Dominion Energy substations would be added to this table in the booklet with the information shown on the screen. Now I'm going to hand it back to Kevin Lynn to discuss the requested rezoning.
Thanks, Mr. Lad. So with regards to the rezoning action item, the request is to rezone a portion of the existing substation site from RA seven sixteen to CO two point five. The request also includes a related update to the sign map to indicate the zoning district and extend line A around the property. Next, please. So as you can see here, the site is currently split zone, CO two point five to the northern portion of the site and RA seven sixteen, the southern portion of the site, and improved with the Dominion Energy Electrical Substation outlined in dark gray. The applicant's request would expand the CO two point five zoning to the remainder of the site, which would improve consistency with adjacent parcels located on the block. Next slide. Looking at the zoning ordinance requirements, both the RA seven sixteen and CO two point five zoning districts allow for major utilities such as electrical substations by use permit. The RA seven sixteen zoning district requires a maximum or a minimum lot size of one hundred thousand square feet, a maximum height of ninety-five feet, and no maximum FAR. Meanwhile, the CO two point five zoning district requires a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, a maximum height of thirty-five feet, and a maximum FAR of point six. So this is also to say that the rezoning request would help the subject property comply with the minimum lot size requirements associated with the proposed expansion of the existing substation. Next, please. So just looking at this a bit closer, as you heard earlier, as part of the exchange agreement, Dominion Energy will acquire the approximately fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty square foot county exchange parcel, which is currently zoned CO two point five. Given that this parcel itself does not meet the minimum lot size requirement of twenty thousand square feet for the proposed expansion, Dominion Energy will consolidate this parcel with the existing substation property through a re-subdivision, resulting in an approximately seventy-four thousand two hundred and fifty square foot site. Under the existing RA seven sixteen zoning district, this consolidated site also doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirement of a hundred thousand square feet. Therefore, to comply with the minimum lot size requirements associated with this expansion, Dominion Energy is requesting to rezone the RA seven sixteen portion to CO two point five. Next, please. So looking at the GLUPP, the site proposed for rezoning is designated medium residential. While the zoning districts that typically correspond to this GLUPP designation include, as you can see here, RA seven sixteen, RA six fifteen, and RA H, staff finds the substation use and proposed rezoning to CO two point five is suitable under its current, under, under this GLUPP designation for several reasons. Per the zoning ordinance, substations are allowed, in fact, by right or with the use permit in all zoning districts except for the SD zoning district. Also, as you can see on this map, the remainder of the site's block is designated medium residential and zoned CO two point five. As a substation use, the use complies with the height and density maximums of the zoning districts typically associated with medium residential, these being RA seven sixteen, RA six fifteen, and RA H. Further, the GLUPP map includes the following note regarding GLUPP designations and zoning districts, which to summarize says that there may be instances where other zoning districts may apply that are not listed next to each GLUPP designation. This is because the determination of an appropriate zoning district for a particular site depends on other factors than simply the GLUPP designation. Therefore, upon review of the CO two point five zoning district standards and the densities and uses permitted under RA seven sixteen, RA six fifteen, and RA H, staff find the proposed rezoning to CO two point five is consistent with the medium residential GLUPP designation and overall ultimately facilitates the expansion of the existing substation. Next, please. So in terms of community feedback, staff have engaged with the wide range of civic associations, property managers, and bids affected by the GLUPP amendment and rezoning request. So the Aurora Highlands Civic Association did submit letters to the county stating that they had no issues with either the GLUPP amendment or the rezoning. However, they did express concerns regarding a few things, including their proposed location of the new substation building, some of the design aesthetics of the new substation building. They wanted to see even wider sidewalks than what is proposed in order to match the adjacent parcels, as well as the loss of trees and open space. They also expressed concern about the future use and remediation of the Dominion Exchange parcel on Ives Street and Eighteenth. These other groups listed here are here, sorry, these other groups listed here relevant to the rezoning and GLUPP amendment did not have any comments or objections. However, we did receive this afternoon a letter of support from the National Landing Bid for expressing their support for the rezoning and GLUPP amendment. Meanwhile, Dominion Energy did conduct their own community outreach beginning in June twenty twenty. They conducted a virtual community meeting with an online survey. They met with the Aurora Highlands Civic Association twice in July and October, and also maintained a project webpage. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, staff recommends to adopt the attached resolution to amend the GLUPP public facility map and table and adopt the attached ordinance for the rezoning and related update to the sign map. Next slide. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to pass it off to the applicant for their presentation now.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein.
Yes, well, thank you, planning commissioners. My name is Matthew Weinstein. I'm counsel to Dominion Energy for this project. And I'm also joined by some of my colleagues from Dominion Energy in Dewberry, who can answer specific questions about architecture, site plan, landscape, or operations should those questions come up tonight. All right, so I think staff gave a very thorough and excellent overview of the project and all the moving parts involved. My goal of my presentation tonight is to give you a little bit more story and context to the evolving nature of the project and the interactions we've had with the community. And really, they've been a collaborative partner throughout this to make the project as good as possible and really show the collaborative nature of Dominion Energy and the community as we've been working with them since June of this year. All right, so some of this has been covered already, but just to really, you know, hit some of these points home. The project itself, the substation itself, is located at the intersection of South Hayes Street and South Fern Street. In twenty nineteen, Dominion Energy performed a comprehensive study of the Crystal Substation. The study results confirmed they need to upgrade aging equipment inside the substation. And the main piece of equipment needing replacement is the cubicle switchgear. In order to upgrade the infrastructure and expansion was required, and Dominion Energy saw an opportunity to enhance the visual aspect of the facility and solicit community feedback in the design and improve both the existing substation and also get feedback on the new one. So Mike Kaluski talked about this generally, but it's really important that we focus on this as well. Dominion Energy is really limited to where it can expand, where it was able to expand for this project, because it must be adjacent to the existing, the expansion must be adjacent to the existing substation to connect to the equipment. What this means is that Dominion Energy really had to look for opportunities immediately surrounding the existing substation. They couldn't find, they wouldn't be able to connect to a substation some distance away and expand that way. So it had to be in this area. And they were presented through four different options. The first one was to replace the switchgear at its existing location. But the problem is the new switchgear is larger than the existing equipment, and it does not provide adequate space for construction, operation, and maintenance while meeting fire safety codes. Option two was building the new switchgear towards the front of the property along South Fern Street. And Kevin really, really hit this home earlier. There are a whole slew of utilities and easements in that area. In particular, there's an underground electric transmission line and underground oil containment vault directly below that area. So expanding over there just was not going to be possible. The other option was building the new switchgear towards the north, so towards the Regency Care property. The issue with this was it did not provide sufficient space to install the new switchgear. It would encroach upon the Regency Care parking lot and driveway, and there are also underground utilities in that location. For that reason, Dominion Energy decided that the building the new switchgear towards the west on the county parcel was the best option. Pursuing this option helps increase the reliability of electric service and improves safety, has least pre-construction challenges and risks, and has no interference with underground lines. And just as a reminder, the current substation is right here, immediately to the west is county parcel. And then the vacated Dominion-owned parcel, which is part of the exchange agreement, is a few blocks away at the corner of Eighteenth and Ives, right here. So Dominion Energy really made a priority for this project to involve the community, take in their feedback, work with them collaboratively, and go above and beyond was typically required for a use permit application. And I'm quite confident we've done that. So for that reason, we have this slide summarizing all the various outreach activities we've undergone since June of this year. We first began on June 15th by reaching out to the neighboring civic associations by email to let them know about the project. On July 8th, we attended the Aurora Highlands Civic Association meeting and gave a briefing on the project at that meeting. We mailed a project announcement letter to the surrounding area and property owners on July 29th. And then we sent out online advertisements through social media and email from August 3rd to 13th, really inviting people to join the virtual community meeting we were holding in August. We also mailed postcards on August 7th to residents around the area, inviting them to, to join the virtual community meeting. And then August 13th, we actually held the virtual community meeting and it's for one hour, and we had 15 attendees, that's nine, including county staff. And on August 14th, we recorded the meeting and posted the survey on the project website. We had 137 recording views, which is quite a lot for an online project, project webpage like this one. From August 19th to 28th, we had a virtual community meeting, post-event follow-up online advertising, so we, you know, reminded people this video, this presentation was out there, we invited them to watch it. We followed civic associations on August 14th by email. We allowed a survey to run until Sep-, September 1st, and it closed on September 1st with 32 responses and 16 comments from the community. September 24th and October 28th, we met with representatives and leadership from the Aurora Highlands Civic Association to address some of their follow-up questions about the project. And then from September through October, we revised our plans based on the community feedback, and, and I'll get into this later, but those revisions were quite substantial, and it really did reflect some of the feedback we got from the community. Real quickly, this is an example of the outreach Dominion Energy conducted for this project online. We, you know, we had Facebook ads, we had Twitter ads, we had, you know, quite a substantial amount of hits for this sort of project, and it was one of the more successful online engagements Dominion Energy has had for any of its projects in recent history. All right, so the post, as I mentioned before, we, Dominion Energy put together a survey with the community, asking them to weigh in on some particular issues and opportunities for the project. So the survey was open for several weeks from August 14th to September 1st. We asked for the community's preference on the new building design. We shared examples of how to use, how the green space could be used in that plaza area, and asked for their feedback and welcome addition comment, comments, and some of the options we presented for the plaza area, softscape options, leisure and interactive options and creative seating. And I'll talk about the results in a second, but those are some precedent images we shared with the community before. So the results for the building design was the, the community showed a strong preference to the cloud design, which is right here. It has a concrete podium and then a screen mesh on top of it. And I will get into this later, but this area is going to be an opportunity for public arts. We are showing a cloud concept here, which kind of reflects Dominion's, you know, goals for clean energy and, and we think it, you know, really fits in with the area. So yeah, the, the cloud concept was definitely the clear winner of the community. And here, here are a few renderings of what that looks like from different perspectives. The first one on the left is going from west to east along South Hayes Street. And then the other one is going the other direction towards Pentagon City along South Hayes. So this is the existing substation, this is the new one, podium base, mesh screening. Here's some other renderings. This one's across from the substation on South Hayes. And then the other one is also from South Hayes looking towards Pentagon City. So the other question we asked the community to weigh in on was how to use that open space along South Fern Street. We received some conflicting advice. Some people wanted a dog park, some didn't. Some people wanted that area to be an attraction for the community, some advised against making that green space an attraction. But the, I think the, the real takeaway is that most people wanted a kind of a leisure or intera-, interactive area, and I'll, I'll go into greater detail on this in a few minutes. Dominion Energy took that feedback and really created an exciting open space area that I think is going to really enhance the pedestrian experience along South Fern to South Hayes, and it's going to be a substantial improvement over what is there now.
Yeah, Mr. Weinstein, I just tapped into it a little bit. We are getting really tight on time. Do you think you could tighten up your presentation?
Sure, I think we have like two more slides. So, so, real fast. No, we have a few back, we have a few backup slides. All right, so responding to community feedback, we made a commitment to providing public art on site. We actually had a meeting earlier today at 6:00 PM with Public Art Committee to preview this with them. We redesigned the plaza to improve the pedestrian and leisure experience. When we widened sidewalk from four feet to six feet in portions along South Hayes Street. So these are some areas for potential public arts. Art Zone 1 is going to be the podium for the new substation. Art Zone 3, which is related to that, is the mesh screening area above the podium. Possible Art Zone 2 is the existing substation wall, and Zone 4 is the plaza area. And I think, based on some discussions with some public arts consultants in Dominion, I think the momentum is going towards this area. But in January, we will be presenting the artist Dominion shows to the Public Art Committee, and then a few months later, presenting the proposal to them. All right, so the plaza redesign, we're going to solve vegetation native to the area, keep sidewalk widths and comments in mind. It's going to be a much more inviting area for pedestrians, and as Kevin mentioned before, it's going to be a much larger area, partially because of the 18th Street Improvements Project. But this area is not fully, we don't have this fully rendered out, but this is going to be a very, you know, really nice, pleasant area for people to walk through. Here's an example of the plaza area looking east towards South Fern Street. Here's looking south towards the South Hayes Street along the plaza. And just a quick aside, the initial plan called for putting the parking kind of towards where this plaza is located, but Dominion Energy was able to make a commitment to moving it out of the plaza, which really leaves this unbroken area, and it's really going to be a nice place for people to walk through. Mentioned before, we're widening sidewalks from four feet to six feet, and that's it for my presentation. So happy to take questions and discuss them here.
Good, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public speakers on this item.
Are there any commissions here that have any reports or comments? Hearing none. Commissioner Schroll, do you have a report from the LRPC?
Yes, Commissioner Schroll, I'll tell me, I'll keep this brief. This staff presentation was very thorough, and Mr. Weinstein's also provided some good background. I'll just focus quickly on the LRPC discussion. And so on Jan-, on September 29th, we did hear that this item, the discussion at that time was around the following items. So we had some discussion about how the proposed revised GLUP map would be used to consider expansion at other substations. You know, do we anticipate those substations? Are other substations to need to expand in the shorter medium term? What would their ideal size be? Has staff considered that? There was also some discussion about, about the land swap proposal, the value of the exchange site. There was a fair amount of discussion about the environmental remediation that might be necessary for the Dominion Exchange site. Staff spoke to that a little bit, but there was discussion at the LRPC about what the remediation cost might be. Who's paying for this? And, and would Dominion pay for any or all necessary remediation costs? And how would we ensure that would happen? Some discussion about the landscaping around the Dominion stave. The substation, which Mr. Weinstein walked through, some of the screening provided, what that streetscape would look like, concern, as Mr. Weinstein noted, about the clear sidewalk width as well around that. Also, some concern about the loss of green space, loss of trees. Some discussion about what that plaza experience would look like in the revised plan as well. So in terms of discussion topics this evening, I think it's appropriate to maybe talk through some of the, you know, background information, so the feasibility analysis that Dominion walks, engaged in as they considered their options here. The next item would be, you know, the exchange sites, both the County Exchange Site and then the Dominion Site. Part of that would be a discussion perhaps of the, any necessary environmental remediation on the Dominion Site. Again, the cost responsibility and timing of that, I think would be ripe for conversation. Next would be discussion perhaps on, on any questions about the GLUP amendments, so both to the map, but also there's a table that staff is proposing to include, as Mr. Lad noted. Next item, the zoning ordinance amendments, walk through going from resigning the site. And then, you know, finally, any kind of streetscape or kind of visual improvements to the Dominion Substation site as well. So I've included some of the intended motions in, in my memo. At this time though, I anticipate moving the county manager's recommendations. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would yield back.
Thank you, Commissioner Schroll. We can now move on to the discussion here. Do we have any clarifying questions to the staff or to the applicant? Hearing none here. Do we have any discussion of this project? Or the GLUP amendments? Can you change just a minute? We have no discussion either. I guess that means we can move on to the, to the motions.
So I, I had a, a list of topics in the memo I circulated. Yeah, so I do have a question if others don't, on the, on the environmental remediation aspects of the Dominion Exchange Site for staff. So I believe staff walked through on their slide six. The initial kind of environmental analysis showed that there wasn't, you know, there wouldn't be necessary, necessarily remediation of the site. I'm wondering, oh, if remediation would be needed? Who's paying for it? What the, what the, how would that work? I don't know, staff could maybe speak to that?
Sure, Commissioner Schroll, this is Mike Kaluski from DES. I'd be happy to address that. So the site is being acquired for, you know, a potential future parks use. We don't know what that use will be. There will be a future public process to help determine that use. And really, whatever remediation is necessary will be dependent upon what that use is. So based on the environmental reports, for example, at the surface, the only, the only issues that would need to be remediated, for example, if it was a, a sort of a passive green space like the, the County Exchange Site, they're very comparable. There's not any real remediation that you would have to do. If you go as far as sort of a, a playground for children, you would either have to sort of encapsulate that surface, which we do with our playgrounds anyway, or whatever is excavated, the soil would, could either be used as fill onsite or disposed of in a regulated landfill. So the, the cost of those different scenarios, they range from between zero, if it's a passive open space, to approximately $55,000. This would be the staff's, or not staff's, but county cost to remediate the site. Although I would point out that this is the nature of the slight contamination at the surface level, it's, it's consistent with the background levels, so this is the-
You're wrong, and you come across some contamination that you missed. Is there then no remedy? So you have background levels that are, or this site is consistent with background levels, but if you come across something else, are we not protected in that scenario as a county?
We are, we are protected from liability. We're not protected from cost. I think that's what you're getting at, if I understand. There's nothing in the exchange agreement where we could sort of claw back at Dominion to, for any remediation.
Why, why not?
That is not a standard provision that we, that we are commercially, you know, seen in real estate transactions.
Okay. Appreciate your clarification there. All right. I'll, I'll yield to other commissioners for now, and I have some other questions perhaps, but.
Okay, Commissioner Morton? And then Commissioner Ted, Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the applicant and Commissioner Schroll for going through in some detail and staff. It helped me understand 2232 a lot better. Just a quick question, since it was raised as a discussion point about the sidewalk width and the open space. Just looking for some clarification, I appreciate you widening the sidewalk, and there was a comment about how you don't quite meet the, the width of the adjacent sidewalk. Is that along the length of the project? And what were the trade-offs that you were looking at and making the determination to not meet the same width? Thanks.
Sure, so we are joined by Jack Story from Dewberry, and I think, Jack, do you want to walk through the sidewalk width? So I also have an exhibit I can share if that's helpful. Jack, are you on mute?
Sorry about that. Yeah, so the sidewalk that we're, we're talking about is the one that runs along South Hayes Street. And to the west, the existing sidewalk off-site is, is approximately 10 feet, and then it tapers down to four feet. Back when South Hayes Street was, was created, and it came through the Dominion Parcel, it was pushed so that there's really only about six feet from the edge of the substation to the back of curb, so we have a pinch point there. So we are looking at doing the sidewalk six feet from that point down to the intersection of, of South Hayes and, and South Fern. So that, that's really the driving factor on that six-foot width. But once we get past that pinch point, we're widening back out to meet the existing 10-foot sidewalk.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Schroll, you have additional questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's your Peterson, Commissioner Peterson's next.
Thank you. I had a follow-up to Commissioner Schroll's questions just about the piece of land that Arlington's going to be acquiring, and what happens if there's, you know, some additional remediation that needs to be done? Has the county staff considered not taking the land as fee simple, for example, and for example, and just having some sort of like permanent access to the land, requiring Dominion to maintain and keep it up and keep it safe? Or is that something that has been decided it's better to actually get ownership of the land?
Thanks, this is Mike Kaluski with DES again. Yes, when staff analyzed it, given the nature of the results of the Phase 2 report and staff's experience in Department of Parks and Rec with this, this type of land, as well as the fact that it's identified in the Public Spaces Master Plan for, for a future acquisition, staff felt that it was a better course of action to acquire the parcel in fee simple as opposed to- Uh, staff felt that it was, um, a better course of action to acquire the parcel in fee simple as opposed to, uh, an alternative arrangement.
Okay, um, Commissioner Schroll, you have further questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Lad, um, question for you. So in the GLUP map or the public facilities map, you're obviously adding the substations and then the additional amendment for the GLUP. GLUP is to add the table of the substations, um, which include the, the approximate acreage. Uh, my question to you about the, um, is, was there any thought given to um, the potential expansion needs for those? And I guess part of that is, is what's being included right now, just the existing acreage?
So for the ten other substations that are not the, the Crystal Substation, it's just reflecting the existing acreage, um, of, of those sites. Uh, now, we, we know that, you know, those, those sites will need to be upgraded over time. You know, it may be decades from now. Um, but obviously, just as we see with this substation, the, the equipment has a, has a useful life um, and will need to be upgraded and there may be expansions that need to happen in the future. Um, and what I can say to that is, you know, staff would be open to engaging Dominion on, on its near mid long-term plans, uh, for the other substations. Um, and if, if they have identified uh, areas where they think they may need expansion or there may be general areas, maybe not even a site, uh, where they might need a new substation, uh, to accommodate growth that we've planned for in Arlington. Uh, we would be open to amending, uh, the GLUP to do that. Um, but we, we, that's not part of this amendment.
Sure. Um, appreciate that clarification, Mr. Lad. Um, I know that the public facilities map is, um, is evolving and, I mean, clearly we're adding things to it this potentially this evening or recommending doing that. Um, my hope kind of broadly for public facilities planning, um, is that we are using this tool for what we intend to see and not just what's there now. Um, and so like our other, um, elements of the general land use plan. Uh, so it's encouraging to hear you say that. I think, you know, I, for one, would, would like to see that, um, kind of planning for our substations, particularly given some of the corridor level planning we're seeing, you know, on the way and things like that, um, where we probably will need substation improvements over time to, to achieve that. Um, okay, um, I appreciate that. Uh, I'm, I'll yield back, Mr. Chairman, and see if there's other questions.
Uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Schroll. Any further questions? Being none, um, I guess we're ready to move on to motions. Do you have any to offer, Commissioner Schroll?
Yes, I mean, I guess before I do, um, I would like to thank the applicant for, um, engaging the community um, around, um, some of their concerns, um, particularly around, uh, the, uh, the landscaping, the plaza, um, you know, the trees, the screening, um, and then also the, uh, the clear sidewalk width. I think those were a number of the concerns that were there and it's encouraging that you're working on those. Um, and obviously we'll continue to do so with the Public Art Commission and others. So, um, thank you for responding to those concerns and I would commend you on your public outreach. Um, what we hope to see from applicants before us. And so, Mr. Weinstein, you've done a good job on behalf of your client, um, as well. Um, thank you for your efforts. Um, and with that, um, Mr. Chairman, um, I would move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached resolution to the general land use plan. GLUP, public, for the public facility table to add Dominion Energy Electrical Substations as public service corporation facilities as shown in attachments one and two in the staff report dated October twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I thank you, Commissioner Morton. Uh, do we have any discussion? Do you need to speak to your motion, Commissioner Scholl? Um, hearing nothing. Uh, ah, you're freezing, you're Okay, anything further, Commissioner Scholl? Okay, uh, we'll move on then to, to take the vote. Um, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner, um, Patterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Starling?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Uh, the, if that's unanimous, leave. Uh, Commissioner Scholl, do you have any further motions to offer?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I move that the planning commission recommend that the county board adopt the attached ordinance to rezone the property known as seventeen twenty South Fern Street, R P C number thirty-five dash zero zero eight dash two three two from the R A seven sixteen zoning district to the C O two point five zoning district and related update to the A C Z O map thirteen dash one to indicate the zoning district and extended line A around the property where necessary as indicated in the staff report dated October twenty eighth, twenty-twenty.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Schroll. Do we have a second?
Uh, I'll second again.
Thank you, Commissioner Morton. Um, do you need to speak to your motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to the, um, to the votes. Uh, Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Starling?
Aye.
Commissioner Schroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Siegel?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Weir?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Again, this passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you to staff, thank you to the applicant and thank you, Commissioner Scholl, for your work on this, a pretty technical, um, uh, agenda item here. Um, so I thank you for the work on this. Uh, that really concludes, um, our agenda. Um, is there anything further, Madam Clerk, that you need to discuss, raise?
Not at all.
Thank you very much for your efforts tonight. Um, this meeting is then concluded. Our next meeting is scheduled for December first. Um, I declare us adjourned. Knock, knock. You everybody, uh, just in December.
Thank you, everyone.